Good morning, everyone. This time, I'd like to call this meeting of Commissioners' Court to order and ask that you rise for invocation. Please remain standing as we will follow with the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and also to the Texas flag. Henry, would you lead us in invocation this morning?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, County Commissioners, and good morning, those who were in attendance. I will lift up mine eyes until it heals from whence cometh my help. My help comes from the Lord which made heaven and earth. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks and praise for your presence with Judge Canales, with the County Commissioners this day. Thank you indeed, indeed, for moving mightily on their behalf. Give them your presence, give them your presence in this meeting this day. Guide them in every area of concern. Move, indeed, give them solutions to difficult problems. Let there be unity and oneness among them. And we thank you indeed for your presence, indeed, with county government, indeed, with Nuaces County in every area of need. We ask your blessings and we ask your presence and we give you thanks and praise in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord and Savior. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you so much. It's February 26th today, 2020. We're in the third floor of the Nuaces County Courthouse, 901 Leopard. The time is 9:08 a.m. And all Commissioners are present, so I do certify to the clerk today that a quorum is present. I'll call upon Timothy to give us a safety briefing this morning to begin.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge, ma'am. We're meeting on the third floor of the Nuaces County Courthouse located here at 901 Leopard Street. The restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium as you exit the Commissioners' courtroom past the Human Resources Office. Please note that there is a fire extinguisher located at the rear of the courtroom. In addition, there are five fire extinguishers located throughout the third-floor atrium area immediately outside the courtroom. In the event of a cardiac emergency, an AED is located on the right wall as you exit the courtroom next to the Human Resources Office. Participants responsible for dialing 911 will be Tyner or Edward. CPR-certified participants in court today, Deputy Vasquez and Dale. In case of evacuation, R.E. Gressrat will be down the atrium stairs immediately outside the courtroom, proceeding through the double doors located on the LaPond side of the courthouse and muster across the street in the parking lot. In case there is a need to shelter in place, we will remain in the building and await further instructions from the Nuaces County Sheriff's Office. Our shared safety topics of today are slips, trips, and fall prevention. That concludes my brief.
Okay, thank you so much. Commissioners, we have minutes in your packet from February 12th, 2020, and I'm certain all of you have had an opportunity to review. Do I have a motion to approve at this time?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Let's proceed to some really wonderful resolutions that we have here this morning. You can see Commissioners' Court is filled, and I love to see that. And before we get to honoring some very special Nuaces County citizens, let's talk about Texas Independence Day, Tyner. And Kathy, you're welcome to join in, but Tyner's, I guess, going to read a resolution, and all of us are going to get a good Texas history lesson this morning, and you are going to remember it, and you're going to go home and be able to regurgitate what every Texan ought to know about March 2nd, so. There is a test, Kathy? Okay. Take notes, everyone.
Texas Independence Day, March 2nd, 2020. Whereas independence was declared this day 184 years ago, desperate citizens residing in what is today the state of Texas met at Washington on the Brazos to express grievances against the tyrant Santa Anna. Whereas the government no longer functioned in the provisions set forth in Mexico's Constitution of 1824, and the tyranny of Santa Anna could no longer be endured. Whereas George Campbell Childress authored the Texas Declaration of Independence, declaring independence from Mexico and creating the Republic of Texas, forever changing the course of history. Whereas citizens of Nuaces County join Texans throughout the state in observance of this revered data and history. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Nuaces County Commissioners' Court that the second day of March 2020 is Texas Independence Day in Nuaces County, Texas.
Thank you. Kathy, would you like to? We actually have a resolution that reads just as Tyner did, and I'd love to present it to you, but on behalf of the Historical Commission and all people who love Texas, we just welcome you and if you'd like to say a few words.
Well, I won't give a test.
Okay.
But I have spoken several times about those men meeting at Washington on the Brazos. It was a courageous thing they did. They didn't even know what was occurring at that time because the Alamo siege had already begun.
Right.
And it was not until later on during the siege that they finally realized they were fighting for independence. Wow, it was a tough call, tough times here in Texas. As the Chairman of the Nuaces County Historical Commission, I want to invite all of you to Monday. I know several of you will have an active part in the presentation on Monday here at the courthouse at 1:30, and the audience, please feel free to show up. Okay, it's a very short one, and Sam Houston is going to be here to tell about his activities and so forth. I think you'll enjoy it. The toast of Texas. There'll be some flyers out in the front, so.
We're looking forward to it, Kathy, and I had to remind myself I didn't want to miss one word, but on February 24th, Colonel Travis smuggled out a letter, and that letter had these words, "To the people of Texas and all Americans in the world, I shall never surrender or retreat, victory or death." Just a week later, on March 1st, the last Texan reinforcements from Gonzalez broke through the enemy's lines and into the Alamo, bringing the total defenders to 185. And of course, it was just the next day that the revolutionary government of Texas formally declared its independence from Mexico. So it's a, those are immortal words for all Texans, and we sure do take a lot of pride in being Texan, don't we? But I think it's really incumbent upon us to learn our own Texas history, and given that Goliad is so close by, I would ask that you really take the month of March to do a little bit of Texas research and take a lot of pride in the fact that you are a real descendant of some, an incredible, really iconic isn't even the right word. I mean bravery doesn't even begin to imagine what those men and women faced, so. Anyway, thank you for helping us.
Thank you so very much.
Yes, and I'm going to present this to you.
Judge, we need to move passage, right?
Yes, we need a motion first. I'll take a motion and a second from Gonzalez, is that correct? And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Kathy, you're welcome to come join us, but I have the exact resolution. I was with the Texas Historical Commission in Austin yesterday, one of our representatives, and they wish you and our Historical Commission the best this month.
This is my first official message as Chairman.
You're doing a good job.
You are. Thank you.
I love your resolution. We're ready. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thanks, Tyler. You get to keep that one. I support you for my level of service. We'll work on it together.
No, exactly.
So as Kathy makes her way down, Tyner, will you help present the next resolution in honor of a very special Corpus Christi Police Department officer?
I'd like to invite the captain to come with me.
That would be wonderful. Captain, welcome this morning.
May I begin, Judge?
Absolutely.
Whereas Captain David L. Cook enrolled in the Corpus Christi Police Academy on August 23rd, 1979, in the 31st session. He started off as a patrol officer, whereas Cook was promoted to lieutenant in 1992 and was assigned to the Patrol Division where he served as a field training officer. He was additionally assigned to the Training Division where he instructed physical training, defensive tactics, street survival, and firearms. As a lieutenant, Cook worked in the Patrol Division and the DEA Task Force, whereas Cook was promoted to captain in 2004 and was assigned as a district captain in patrol. He was the Director of Training and managed the Narcotics Vice Investigations Division and the Organized Crime, Internet Crimes against Children, whereas Cook was also commander of the Emergency Response Unit, which includes SWAT, Hostage and Negotiation Team, Bomb Squad, and the Dive Team for 15 years. Captain Cook also managed the K-9 Unit and the Gang Unit during his time with CCPD. Whereas during his time with CCPD, Captain Cook has received many awards and honors, including a Life Saving Award and was selected Supervisor of the Year in 2017. Captain David Cook made his last radio call on January 31, 2020, after 40 years of dedicated service to the Corpus Christi Police Department and the citizens of Corpus Christi and Nuaces County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nuaces County Commissioners' Court hereby recognizes Captain David Cook for the countless contributions to the Corpus Christi Police Department and the citizens of Corpus Christi, and encourages the citizens of Nuaces County to join the court in celebrating his many achievements in the 40 years he dedicated his life to.
Thank you so much, Tyner. Captain, welcome again. Court would like to recognize also Chief Mike Merkel, who's here with us. You have many brothers and sisters in blue, both here in this courtroom and also watching all over, really, this country, because one of the things I've learned about the blue is that it doesn't matter if you just have brothers and sisters in one town. Turns out, you just have them all over the country when you need them. And so we're just very proud to recognize you and your service here today. And Chief, I wonder if you might want to come stand by? And Captain, would you like to say a few things?
Just wanted to take a moment to thank the Commissioners' Court for taking the time to recognize my service. I appreciate all that the community has done for me, and it has been my honor to serve this community for 40 years. It's been my honor to have served with the Corpus Christi Police Department. This community is one of the greatest communities there is. The citizens are phenomenal here, and I cannot count the number of times that I've had people come up to me and tell me that they appreciate the service we provided, the number of times people have paid for meals for me anonymously, and my brother officers, my sister officers. It's such a fine community to serve in. And again, thank you for the time that you took to recognize me today. I appreciate it.
It's our honor.
So moved, Judge.
I've got a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Chief, welcome.
Thank you, Judge. I appreciate the opportunity to say a couple of words. It is because of men like David Cook that our police department commands such respect from this community. David is unabashed in his commitment to the community. It's been that way for 40 years, 40-plus years. My personal first-time experience with Dave was showing up at the Police Academy, and he was the PT Coordinator and happened to be one of the top athletes in the nation before he arrived there. So I don't know if you all are familiar with that, but David was one of the fastest men in America at one time. And yeah, that's a true story. And he made sure to punish us very, very hard in the academy. He was a brutal guy, but to this community, he is consistent. He is honest. He is beyond reproach, and we are very, very proud of David. We hate to see him go. This is one of those bittersweet times where someone has given all they can to a community and to a city, to a county, and you don't want them to leave, but you're certainly happy for them, so. We wish him well in his travels and hopefully he sticks around here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a funny feeling about people who dedicate their entire life to service, and that is that they never stop.
They don't.
So just because you take off one uniform, I have this sneaking suspicion that you will find a way, Captain, to continue to serve our community, and we welcome that, and we hope that you enjoy every bit of whatever moment of retirement that you want to give yourself. And if your work and life finds you back to a world of service, I bet you'll be standing before that podium again where we honor you once more, so. Thank you. Thank you.
Captain, I just want to say thank you for your service, and you were coming in when I was going out of the police department, and I think you rode with me one time as a rookie, so I want to take credit for training you. I don't want to give the credit to everybody else now, okay? I want a little bit of the credit too, but I want to say thank you for everything you've done, and we appreciate you, and when the uniforms come on, you know, you don't know if you guys are coming home or not, so we really appreciate everyone in uniform.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Captain, thank you very much. Captain, also, I wanted to say thank you for your services. Several of us have been former members of the City Council and had direct dealings with you and your department and working there, and you were always just awesome to work with. You were a great representative of the department, great representative of the citizens of Corpus Christi, and we really do appreciate all your service. And this is truly a small token, and we ought to probably do this for every police officer that retires, and unfortunately, we don't, but maybe that's what we ought to start doing because I know that you feel the same way. There's a lot of other great men and women in that department that have gone out and haven't gotten some of the recognition you have, but you certainly deserve this. You've earned it. I hope you enjoy your retirement, and we greatly, greatly appreciate all of your service. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Captain, congratulations. As Commissioner Chesey mentioned, you know, there were several of us that worked with you when we were on City Council for Corpus Christi. And so I remember the first time I addressed him in City Council chambers, I called him Captain Hook, not Captain Cook. I quickly learned there was a difference, but every time that you walked in the room or every time we were made aware of hostage situations or other tactical issues, we knew that when you were on the scene that things were going to get taken care of, so thank you for your service.
I want to thank you as well, and I'm just curious, 40 years of service, that's such a long time. What in the world are you going to do with yourself?
I'm finding after three weeks, I'm a little bored. I'm probably going to have to find something to occupy my time.
Yeah. Sheriff? Sheriff?
Hey, I was going to say, Captain, there's three of us that have come from the city to the county for a reason. It's a good gig over here.
We love it. We love. We have an incredible Reserve Deputy program.
Why should we want to maintain our reserve status with the city?
Okay.
Chief Shauer has told me he has some speaking engagements. He'd like to talk to me, like me to speak on drug abuse to some of the...
Oh, that's great. Chief, maybe we can bring him into our party concept. We've got a lot of great opportunities. I know, I guess it was Lincoln who said, "Whatever you are, be a good one." You followed his rule of law, you are a good one. Thank you. Thank you.
Just take a picture?
Um, we would love a pic. Would you honor us with a picture? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief, join us.
You want to get all of them up here?
You know what? We'd love it.
Put them all in the well.
Okay, one with Captain by himself and then with the whole gang, yeah. Let me show this one.
Thank you for your service. Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Judge. I appreciate it.
Are we looking over here? Yep.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Everybody else?
You want to get the rest of the law enforcement people maybe up in the well?
Yeah, in the well.
Can my son come up?
Yeah, whoever you want.
Absolutely.
Is the one that did the final call for me?
I wonder who was on the other end of that.
My son, he works for MetroCom. This is Kevin.
Oh, man. Hey, Kevin, thanks for what you do at MetroCom. I've learned a lot about...
Margaret Mead is his aunt.
Oh, really?
Yeah, Margaret's his aunt.
Come on up here, my dad. Come on, everybody. Are you up? I thought maybe all the rest of these guys were up there. Come on, y'all come up here.
Y'all come up here.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
That's why they're...
Yeah, I forgot, yeah.
We'll let them fill the gap for us.
Yep, yep. Y'all come on down.
Y'all come down here this way.
Come on over here. Make it balance out a little bit.
Lay it up. Lay it up.
How are you, sir? Good, gee, you doing all right? Good morning. Right there.
All right. You got us?
All right, you're good. One, two, three, go. One, two, three, go.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for the honor. Appreciate it very much.
Congratulations. Whatever I'm wearing is shedding.
Okay. And Tyner, would you take us through item number three, which is also an amazing resolution and recognition of another very special person?
Sheriff, you want to come stand with me? Sheriff?
And can we have the family up there, too?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
This recognition is in honor of Benny Lee Kraft, and we'd invite the Kraft family to join us.
And I'd like to share with the court a photo that's on your screen. Benny Lee Kraft, November 22nd, 1957, February 1, 2020. Whereas Benny Lee Kraft was born in Hamlin, Texas on November 22nd, 1957, Benny is preceded in death by his parents Bobby Joe and Mary Elizabeth Kraft. He is survived by his wife Kelly, daughter Shannon, spouse Tony, brothers Bobby, spouse Donna, Kenny, spouse Cindy, and Don, spouse Susan, his sisters Laquita and Ellen, spouse Ricky, and numerous aunts, beloved aunts, uncles, cousins, nieces, and nephews. Whereas Benny pursued a career in oil and gas as a gager that eventually led him to owning his own company, Craftco CGS Incorporated. Benny also had the opportunity to join J.F. Welder heirs and was a ranch foreman for their Odom Angelita, AKA Angelita Ranch. He moved his family to the ranch and worked with Texas Parks and Wildlife in preserving the property's hunting and fishing resources. He loved the ranch and was diligent in its upkeep. Whereas after working with Texas Parks and Wildlife, he then pursued a Texas Peace Officer's License. He loved working with his law enforcement community brothers and sisters and served over 25 years as a Reserve Deputy for both San Patricio and Nuaces County Sheriff's Departments. Whereas Benny loved his family, he loved his work, he loved the Lord, but above all, he loved the Lord. In 2001, a small group of folks began meeting for a Bible study on the Angelita Ranch, and his group grew into a congregation known as Bible Believers Baptist Church. Benny was a faithful member since the beginning. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nuaces County Commissioners' Court hereby memorializes Benny Lee Kraft for his many contributions to Nuaces County and the surrounding areas.
So moved.
I've got a motion and multiple seconds, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Sheriff, would you like to visit with us about...
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I met Benny about 14 months ago, and it was obvious from day one that the most important things in his life were his family and his faith. And Benny might have been in the oil and gas business as a career, right? But his vocation in life was obviously public service, and Benny was an extremely valuable member, talking to the people in San Patricio County, but also for the Nuaces County Sheriff's Office. He wore the same uniform that we are wearing today, and he looked darn good in it, as you can see. Benny was a joy to be around. You could tell he enjoyed every single day, especially when it came to being a public servant. And we'll miss him, and Kelly, if you'd like to say anything?
Well, I wasn't prepared to speak, but that never stops me, really, so. I just want to thank the sheriff and all of, just the outpouring of love and support is overwhelming, and I appreciate this. Thank you all so much.
You're most welcome, and he will be remembered here. Thank you, Sheriff, for bringing this beautiful recognition to Commissioners' Court, and we do have a copy for the family, and it would be our honor to present it. I'll come down there and present it to you with our deepest sympathies, and I just, I can't believe how wonderful it is to be able to celebrate life in this courtroom, because I want you to know while it's packed here today, it's also packed at home. So people will know Benny's name, and they will know how honorably he served not only Nuaces but San Patricio County, and I hope that brings you some comfort.
Can we get the family up there and then all the officers?
Sure, that'd be wonderful.
All of Benny's officers, family down here. We'll get a picture.
This is great.
He's tall, sure.
All shorties on the left, please.
Hold that chair for him, Michael. Don't let him fall.
Thank you, Tyner.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Hang on. One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you.
It feels so good to honor people for life of service and a life well-led, and you really should lose yourself to service. At this time, Tyner, we're going to move into board appointments, and I would ask that you assist me on these three that are coming up. We can take them one at a time. The Nuaces County Library Advisory Board is the very first one.
And Judge, you have seven vacancies, but you have six incumbents that reapply, I believe. Josie Haro, Amy Enriquez, Betty Jean Longoria, Jessica McComb, Lynn Camacho, Robin Soto, and it would leave one vacant seat.
Motion to reappoint.
I've got a motion and a second, and all those in favor of reappointing the six and leaving the seventh open signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. We will send them letters and thank them for their service on this very important Library Advisory Board that helps both our Keach and Bishop libraries as well as our law library now. The second one is the Animal Control Advisory Board.
And Judge, you had two vacancies and you got two applications. Applications were received from Selena Boggs and Matt Stevens.
Okay, I have two vacancies and two appointments, and I entertain a motion at this time for their approval.
Motion to accept applications and resignations.
Motion and second on both matters, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Hold that chair for him, Michael, don't let him fall.
Thank you, Tynor. It feels so good to honor people for life of service and a life well-led, and you really should lose yourself to service. At this time, Tynor, we're going to move into board appointments, and I would ask that you assist me on these three that are coming up. We can take them one at a time. The Nuaces County Library Advisory Board is the very first one.
And Judge, you have seven vacancies, but you have six incumbents that reapplied, I believe. Josie Haro, Amy Enriquez, Betty Jean Longoria, Jessica McCombe, Lynn Camacho, Robin Soto, and it would leave one vacant seat.
Motion to reappoint.
Okay.
I've got a motion and a second, and all those in favor of reappointing the six and leaving the seventh open signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. We will send them letters and thank them for their service on this very important library advisory board that helps both our Keach and Bishop libraries, as well as our law library now. The second one is the Animal Control Advisory Board.
And Judge, you had two vacancies, and you got two applications. Applications were received from Selena Boggs and Matt Stevens.
Okay, I have two vacancies and two appointments, and I entertain a motion at this time for their approval.
Motion to accept applications and resignations.
Motion and second on both matters, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. And I should have asked, was there any member of the library advisory board that's with us today, so I could personally give you my thanks? I know I see Mr. Stevens here for the animal control, and I really want to say thank you, and I've charged you with something already, and that is to bring us a veterinarian. And you said no problem, so I'm going to hold you to that. And Ms. Boggs, is she here? Okay, well, we will send everybody our letter of thanks, and we look forward to working with you. The third and final one is the Beach Management Advisory Committee, Tynor.
And we've got, you may know him as LJ Francis. His real first name is Larry G.
Larry G, yes.
And I passed those applicant, applications out earlier, and there is an empty seat.
Uh, move appointment.
Motion and second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. And I did recommend Tim Brent, and I think he's going to be an outstanding member. He's also one of our city engineers and has a specialty in environmental background, so I think it's going to be a wonderful addition. And he couldn't be with us because he's at the city today. All right, at this time, Edward, I'd ask that you bring forward a public comment, and I think we have a few. So at this time, I'll ask for Dr. Gloria Scott to come forward.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Commissioners and the audience. I'm rising to say thank you, and first to apologize for not being here last meeting to receive the recognition for Black History Month that you and the Commissioners put forth. There are so many things that happened during this month, and I had not, for whatever reason, gotten the information that that would be that day and was in another place doing something else at that time. I would like to say that it is appropriate, and indeed, it is appreciated each year that the Nuaces County Commissioners and Judge, that you have not only continued this in your judgeship, but I want to at this moment say thank you for the very excellent exhibit you have on the first floor. I hope that everybody has seen it. If not, please do, related to Black History Month in the United States and in Corpus Christi. So thank you very much. I would, I think I'm correct in saying you are the only judicial, well, any rate, place that has such an exhibit outside the O'Vale Williams Center. So thank you very much for it. There are several persons here this morning who are a part of giving the leadership in many ways, who I'd like to ask to come join me. Reverend Axel from Pilgrim Baptist Church. Reverend Axel, will you come up? Sylvia Tryon Oliver, the president of the Corpus Christi Black Chamber, and the members with her, and Ms. Mona and Ms. Barbara, people from the churches and the community to please come forward to be seen as people who are actively involved in making sure that the diversity of this Nuaces County is accurate and goes forward. I would like also to say that the principal of Solomon Coles High School, Ms. Monica Byerena, asked me to please say thank you to you all and to indicate that there is in Room 102 at Solomon Coles High School the museum on African-Americans in Corpus Christi in that building. And there are many things there that you would really like to see. And to invite anybody, from anybody who was in your offices, in the government, who were African-Americans in Corpus Christi with items or artifacts that you can donate to that museum, please do, and they are duly noted and are visible, visible to be seen. And since Solomon Coles was the only high school that African-Americans could attend originally here in Corpus Christi, it has a long history. And one of the portraits downstairs in your exhibit, Judge, is that of Solomon Coles himself, who came here from Pennsylvania and started Solomon Coles School in a two-room broom shack. And then, after his example from out of the state and out of a different part of the country, he encouraged some Hispanic persons to form a high school from another two-room broom shack about three blocks away for Hispanic kids, because they didn't have a high school either, a school period. And downstairs on Broadway, Upper and Lower, there was a two-story brick school for Caucasian students from first grade through 12th grade. So these people made a tremendous impact. And so Ms. Byerena did say, please, to have you all know the folk community to come to visit, and also to make donations of anything from any family, or encourage families to do that, that they can be placed. We have many things there in the exhibit, and to say thank you.
Oh, well, thank you all so much, and I will take a look, because I love our history and I love sharing it. I think it was perfectly wonderful that it was early voting downstairs at the courthouse, so everybody that has to go to Floor 1 to early vote is stopping and looking at the posters and reading. I've watched it happen, and so this is something we need to continue every year, maybe even expand it. It's been, it's been really beautiful. I also want to thank Teresa Macklemore from our Court Administration office, who also lent us some very special posters that we use to enhance what you had already allowed us to borrow from the City Parks and Rec Department. And so that was great. And then I actually told the story, Dr. Scott, last court, that it was, it was my understanding from reading the history of Solomon Coles that it was a sheriff's deputy who had defied the law and taught him how to read. And so I thought the sheriff, that it's very fitting that we have this tribute to Solomon Coles in the county courthouse, where this administration of justice and law comes to play because of how incredibly interesting all those pieces of his life came together. So anyway, thank you again for, for really allowing me to, to celebrate along with the rest of our country this beautiful month of African-American history. Thank you, thank you so much. I forgot, it's public comment, you can sign me up, it's all right. I'll get it, I'll get it in here.
She's pushing me to the mic.
Okay.
So I'll just say ditto to what she said already, and perhaps this is an opportunity now for us to extend February to 31 days.
Sylvia, I signed you up too. Reverend, I'm signing you up too.
Let me say good morning, and to Judge Bobo Canales, and to the Commissioners. It is indeed a privilege and a pleasure to be here. Just want to say that just recently, I believe it was two weeks ago, we honored Black History First, and Dr. Gloria Scott was one of the persons whom we honored from... Listen, Dr. Gloria Scott is a gold mine. And so I am so proud of what she does, and she does not mind speaking what she believes. So you all be careful, because she will let you know in no uncertain terms. Thank you so much, and have a good blessed day, and bless you in your work and what you do. Some say, may the work that I do speak for me, and your work that you're doing is speaking for you. Thank you, Judge, and blessings to you.
Thank you. So I may need a little help. I'm having difficulty reading the name on one of our public comment. And if you signed up last, if you would just raise your hand and announce your name for me. Can you help me here? Okay. It looks like maybe D.A., duh? Did anyone sign up for public comment here? Okay, I do need a little bit of guidance here, because I might take us out of order. It will make contact, it'll provide context louder. And so I have two people who have signed up, both of which refer to an agenda item. But I do want, I do want you to know that one of them is not, it's in relationship to, but not about that item. It's a presentation only. Would you like, I can advance those items, and then they can speak about that? Is that, is that all right? Okay, that's what I'm going to do. Edward, I'm going to call you to the front to see if you can figure out this last... Is there anybody, I have Ms. Fig and Ms. Barrera. We're going to advance the items on the regular agenda up, so that you can now provide public comment. We're good? Okay, thank you. Before we do that, I've signed myself up, not only for comments on Black History Month and resolution, but also for the Employee of the Month. And I would like to present that before we go into the regular agenda and advance those items that there's public comment on. And that's just a great opportunity for us to share with you that it is time to honor our March 2020 Employee of the Month. And this special person was nominated by Court Administration's Director, Merrily Roberts. And I'd like to read for you a little bit about this incredible part of our Nuaces County, this person in our Nuaces County family. This person provides Spanish interpretation services for the courts. Mr. Carisales provided all language, Spanish language instructions for pro se litigants as part of the 2019 Centers of Excellence Awards awarded to both the 214th and the 347th District Courts. These instructions are posted online as part of the court's web pages, and were acknowledged by the Texas Judicial Council as an important tool in improving access to court processes. You'll recall that we are one of, really just, I don't think there's anybody in, in South Texas that has this designation of Judicial Centers of Excellence, and we memorialize that in a plaque downstairs in our jury room. Mr. Carisales also provided interpretive services for the county clerk's elections department related to this year's primary elections, and his voice is the voice you hear on all our automated voting machines when opting for Spanish language instructions. Those services significantly increase Nuaces County citizens' ability to participate in the electorate process. It is with great pride that I tell you that our March 2020 Employee of the Month is Mr. Javier Carisales. And I know that as the, really, this doesn't even do you justice, Javier, but you definitely consistently demonstrate the professionalism and the precision that you have in providing these interpretation services. In this very important electoral season that we're in, we cannot thank you enough. You are truly that person, that's an unsung hero, that's behind the scenes. And this is why I believe so strongly in celebrating the people that work here in Nuaces County, because I know what you do, but I want everybody to know what you do, and thank you for the opportunity that it gives our most vulnerable population, the ones that, that need this interpretive service. So I wholeheartedly concur. You are an amazing person, a great employee, and a great service to your community. And thank you, Merrily, for allowing us to honor Javier. As they say, it's not a great gig, but you do get lunch with me. And, and, but the best part of it is you get a great parking space for a month, and we're real proud that you call Nuaces County your home, nine to five. So would you join Merrily and let us give you a round of applause? And I have, I have this certificate, and we'd love to take a picture with you, and join us up here, Javier and Merrily, and anybody that you brought with you to celebrate. Do you have your family with you? Okay, I was just wondering. Your coworkers are, are part of your Nuaces County family. Well, it, this is the Employee of the Month certificate, and it just says, "In recognition of outstanding performance, productivity, and dedicated service." But it also says, "With our great love, affection, and appreciation." Thank you, Merrily, for nominating him. Brent, would you move that chair for me? Thank you, thanks for joining Javier today. Here, Javier, I'm going to let you kind of hold it with me.
Been here for a while. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Quick question. Thank you very much, everybody.
Back to the trenches. The phones are ringing up.
That's what I voiced, that's what I thought.
So what I'm going to do is, in the interest of efficiency, there's two items that we have public comment on, and so Commissioners, I need to take them out of order. One is regular agenda item number six, and one is item number seven. And so we'll take six first, and I would recognize Cindy Barrera of the Nuaces County Development Commission to speak for three minutes in public comment. And I'll just remind you, we don't speak back unless we sign up. And we'll ask you to speak, and then what we'll do is follow with that item, Commissioners. Okay? Forgive me, regular agenda 4A6. Did I say something else? I beg your pardon. Am I wrong? 4, 4A6. I'll give everyone a chance to catch up. And really, 4A7 is probably relatable as well. So 4A6 and 4A7, that's what I see here on the, on the agenda.
Both of them to the front then, right?
Yes, sir. I'm going to allow those items to be taken after she makes public comment. And that'll be followed by...
It'll be one and two then. So it'll become one and two?
I asked the county attorney, we're just trying to... Otherwise, public comment is too disjointed from the item that we're talking about. And then we're going to follow that up with Flatiron Dragato's presentation and one public comment in regards to that particular one.
But is this part of the agenda? What is, they can comment anyway.
It's not public comment, though. It's part of the agenda, I'm confused too. I don't know, I'm okay moving an item up, but we don't have to, because they signed up for public comment. If you want to move it up, Judge, that's your prerogative, I just am confused.
You can just call it comment then.
Okay, so you're just moving it up?
I'm just moving it up.
One and two be one and two, six and seven be one and two.
Yes, thank you. That, that's fine, and we're still going to...
Talk about it.
Yeah. Let me just let you make your comment, and then we'll go into it. Okay. Chair, I mean, the judge recognizes Cindy Barrera once again.
Thank you, Judge, good morning, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to be here on behalf of the Nuaces County Development Commission. We operate with one simple mission, and that is to encourage and facilitate countywide collaboration to create a world-class community. So what that basically means is when a company is interested in seeking new or expanded business opportunities, then we want to do one thing, and that's to help them navigate through the county resources, so that they're able to achieve their goal. We also want to improve the quality of life and quality of place for the residents of Nuaces County, and we plan to do that by the development of new economic opportunities in the county. We exist, thanks to Judge Canales, under the Local Government Code, Section 381.001. She does have the right, or the county judge has the, the right to appoint a county industrial commission. That was actually done in February of 2019, so just a little over a year ago. We were appointed, and in April, six of our members were sworn in, with two additional ones in January of this year. In October of 2019, we did adopt our bylaws, and those are available for review. Our commission is very diverse. We're diverse in where we live in Nuaces County. We're diverse in the sectors and industries that we work in, how we worship, and also our political views. And that was intentional. Our members are composed of our Chair, Lindsey Peach, our Secretary, Dr. Matilda Sines, our members Sandra Alvarez, myself, Cindy Barrera, San Juan Garcia, Wendy Herman, Linda Stewart, and Jonathan Torres. We also have four ex officio members, who are Dan Liondecker, Govan N. Ned Karney, Sean Strawbridge, and Ian Vasey. Judge, we are incredibly thankful to you for your confidence in us, for believing in our passion and our excitement and our ability to impact Nuasis County. I mentioned our diversity, but what we, what we have in common is that we love where we live and where we work, and we want to impact the county. We have formed three subcommittees. Those are currently the Marketing and Public Relations that is chaired by myself, and with additional members of Sandra Alvarez, Linda Stewart, and Govan Ned Karney. We have our Finance and Governance Committee that is chaired by San Juan Garcia, with additional members being Ian Vasey and Dan Leindecker, and our Planning Committee is chaired by Jonathan Torres, with his additional member, Wendy Herman. I have included bios for all members, if you're interested in learning a little bit more about those of us who are serving on the commission. We won't go through all of that. We have been quite busy since we started meeting last spring. We have had 14 presentations that you'll see in this chart, and part of that was really just to educate ourselves on what's going on in the county. We have three in particular that I'd like to highlight. Two of those happen to be from our very fine institutions of higher learning here in the county, Delmar College and Texas A&amp;M University Corpus Christi. Of course, we wanna know, and wanted to know what is working, what they can provide to the county in terms of resources for our workforce through their students, and they shared some very compelling and enlightening information that many of us were not aware of, so it was great to have that opportunity. We also learned quite a bit from Amanda Cutberth with the New Opioid Task Force, and just so much information about the education, the training, and the funding that the county needs, the resources that are necessary to help fight that. And lastly, I wanted to highlight Christine Bryant with the Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development Commission. She came in and shared a presentation on Opportunity Zones, gave us an overview of that federal program and the Opportunity Zones in our region. So all of this has really helped to prepare us and equip us to be a collaborative partner for the county, to bring new, new business to the county. Also wanted to share our plans, of course, in order to facilitate and collaborate, it is gonna require a staff and an office, so we are in the process of looking for an actual office space. We're excited about that. And the last thing that I wanna share are our goals that we've set. In addition to our meetings, we have done some planning, and we came up with three main goals that I'll share quickly. The first one is to, just doing Nuasis 101, it's getting to know the communities, what's needed, how can we help? The second one is to advocate and create awareness for the development of the Nuasis County Courthouse. We all know that that's been an ongoing project, but we want to see that to fruition. And lastly, we wanna optimize the quality of life in Nuasis County by collaborating with not only the medical community, but the community in general, to help fight the problem with both mental and behavioral health and the opioid crisis. Lastly, I wanna thank Commissioner Vaughn and Commissioner Modest for already having attended one of our meetings previously. We really appreciate your support. Our meetings are open to the public. We are compliant with the Open Meetings Act. We meet the first Tuesday of every month from noon to two o'clock. We do typically meet in this room. If there is a change of venue, we certainly do share that. Again, Judge, thank you so much for your confidence in us, and we look forward to continuing to impact Nuasis County. Okay, so for the agenda items that are posted...
Number six and number seven.
Right, so we are actually looking, as I mentioned, we're not only looking for office space, but also staff, and so we have met previously with John Breyer, and we are looking for approval, hopefully to have him as a resource to us, and do seek approval to be able to have him as a consultant to, to the commission. Furthermore, we have looked into office space in Tower Two at 555 North Corongoa. We love the location, it being incredibly close to the courthouse. We think it's a great place to host interested developers and people that are wanting to invest in our community, and we are looking also to seek approval for that. We are very fortunate, we have been able to secure some funds through a partnership and collaboration with the Port of Corpus Christi, and we are looking to do some additional fundraising throughout the year and seek other community partners to help us with the funding of these, these two items.
So Cindy, the, the work that you're, you're asking for Mr. Breyer to receive would be, is it considered more of a full-time position, or is it just a certain amount of hours per week, or...
Eventually, we, we definitely want to have a full-time person, and we're still trying to work out the logistics of, of what we can do with Mr. Breyer. We'd love to have him full-time, obviously. All of the members, of course, and we all have our full-time jobs, so it would take a, a full-time person to help us carry out. We meet, and we have great planning, strategic sessions, and a lot of things that we want to put into action, and it would definitely be helpful to have Mr. Breyer full-time.
So with the CCRDC, they're regional, and they, they celebrated a victory, which we all should, with steel dynamics, but they claimed that victory, but it wasn't really a victory for Nuasis County.
Absolutely.
We lost out. So this gives us an opportunity to have someone who's gonna advocate and really work on projects to work and bring them or keep them here.
Correct. And, and that's so important to us, because you're absolutely right, that we see so much growth across the bridge, and we're missing out on those opportunities. So we do need to focus for Nuasis County, because there's so much potential here, and if we have the capability to have that emphasis placed on our county, I think we'll have a lot of future wins.
Good. And, and Judge, I, I know you work closely with this commission because they're your appointees, and the, the one meeting I had a chance to come to, some great discussions about TICile, and that's part of Precinct Three, so I was really interested on that. I would love to see, and I don't know how, just thinking off the top of my head with this, but, you know, in, in Robstown, we have the Robstown Area Development Corporation, and we have the RIDC, and the RIDC is, is more of an economic development engine, but, you know, if one or both could be brought in to really be used and, and, and work with, with the commission on, because they, that's what their advocacy is about, and that's what we were just talking about the other day, is what, you know, what can we do to bring more business, more, more attention to the county, especially the western part of the county, that we feel, you know, we have a lot of smaller towns and communities who feel they're losing out, or had great businesses one day, and just because of economics and, and trends have changed, that they've lost out on long, longstanding businesses in agriculture and, and industrial. So I would love if, and I saw that you already had a presentation from the previous city manager in Robstown, there's a new one there, so maybe bring him in, give him an opportunity to learn a little bit, and just have that coordination with them, and also with Elva Lopez from the RIDC, and Ron Bergland with the RIDC. I would really appreciate that, because they do need that focus and attention, and also, you know, I try to inform them, we have had a lot of great work. We have had a lot of great projects out there, and really, that's where the growth is, is really along the I-69 corridor between Precinct One and Three, and even into Precinct Two. So we're there, we wanna help them, but how can their services or their, their interests work along with ours?
Right. I appreciate those recommendations, and we have discussed some of them. Part of the Nuasis 101 is getting to know the leaders in those smaller communities, because we have identified that even in Nuasis County, there's a lot of emphasis in the Corpus area, and so we wanna make sure that those communities are not being overlooked. We certainly don't wanna be a complaint department, but we wanna know how we can help and how we can be a resource to them.
Thank you. Cindy, just, I, I'm sorry, and I, I don't know who John Breyer is, I don't know anything about John Breyer, can, so can you tell me where that came from?
Yeah, we're just about to get to the item. I'm gonna introduce it, and that way he can bring him up here.
Oh, no, I thought she just did that. That would, I thought she just was asking for John Breyer in the office.
She is, but I haven't, I haven't offered item number six yet. I mean, we're right there, just 30 seconds.
Oh, yeah, okay. I thought that's what she just said, and so, my bad.
No, you're correct. I'm happy for you to introduce John Breyer. I just wanted to read the item number six, just to tell the audience so that they know what it is that we're actually doing. So with that lead-in, thank you Cindy, and also you're joined here by fellow NCDC member as well. I was gonna say Sean Strawbridge, who's ex officio from the Port, and, and Ms., yes, Linda Stewart's also here, NCDC member. I just wanted to recognize them. And so, yes, this is all commissioners for item number six, that we moved out of order, which is discussed and considered the approval of a personal services contract with John Breyer for purposes of providing services to the NCDC. We just thought it would be helpful to put the predicate first, so then, then you could understand what John Breyer, who he's gonna be working for. And this is the funding source for this, before we get into John Breyer's credentials and ask him maybe to make some comments, is the funding source is through a special revenue fund that we created when the Port of Corpus Christi was basically equalized those dollars that they also provide to San Pat's EDC. That money, that appropriation was 90,000 for their fiscal year, and so we were the recipients of October through December, 12,000 was our pro rata share, and then this year, in their new fiscal year, starting January one, they'll receive another 90,000. So while we receive those dollars incrementally over the quarterly system, we expect to have a, a, a revenue source, a special revenue of 102,000. This personal services contract is just under 50,000 through the fiscal year. And so with that intro, I just wanted to say that it's always weird to talk about yourself, but we're gonna make him do it anyway. He's a former United States Army Colonel, and he has experience in the both local government, business development, and marketing from all levels, local, state, and fed. He's the former president, CEO of the Midland Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Austin Chamber of Commerce, and the CEO of the Beaumont Chamber of Commerce. He also worked under, I wanna, I never wanna make this wrong, it was the Texas Department of Economic Development, and he served as Director for the Business Development Division of that great state agency that really was on the forefront of making Texas the best state in the union to do business in. And so...
Judge, that's what I was just gonna ask Cindy about. Would you mind, before we came up, I did have a couple more questions for Cindy about how they got with him, and I wanted to ask him, her too. I'm happy to hear from him, but, and I wanted to thank them also for the great work they've done for the commission, and I just was trying to find out from them how he got involved, and then, so I kinda didn't wanna leave Cindy, if that's okay, before we went to...
No problem, go ahead.
Sure. So we were very interested in his work, especially with the city of Midland, just the great turnaround that took place there. We're trying to develop the same type of team and teams here, and he was instrumental in that, and that's really how, how that came about.
And, and I'm sure he's very well qualified, and we're here, I just wanna make sure too, were there any local people considered for a contract like this? Because it's a significant contract, and it's local monies, and I just wanna, you know, cover that aspect of it to see if anyone was qualified, or you felt, you had a chance to look at anybody local that might have filled this role as well.
Sure. So we have discussed different options. We have not placed an actual posting for a position, and we probably will do that in the future. Right now, we do need someone immediately to step in and help us. So I don't wanna say this is a short-term fix, it could be permanent, but he's extremely qualified, and we wanna get moving as quickly as possible, and this seems like the best solution in our opinion.
And you just didn't feel like there was, I'm just covering it, you just didn't feel like there was a local option in regards to this particular position for now?
We discussed recommendations among the commission, and we couldn't come up with a better name.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, but thank you very much for all y'all doing. I really appreciate it.
I would also, I would also invite him to, to speak, because he actually does have a lot of local connections here to the greater Corpus Christi area, and also is actually gonna be having, I guess, what we call our coastal home, right, our summer homes. We have a lot of folks that come around the state of Texas and have second homes here, and I think that's also somewhere in the package. But to answer your question, he's been pretty darn local, because for the past year, he's been helping the NCDC free of charge, really, in, in assisting us together, formulating what is the template of all templates, which is not only the Priority Midland Project, but the Permian Strategic Partnership. And, and it's because of that experience, that very unique experience that he brings to help us formulate here. But you'll see that, that he has tremendous local connections. In fact, it was through my old good friend, Oscar Martinez, that, that when we reached out and said, "Who did that Priority Midland Project? Who was in charge of that, and how do we get that person to come and teach us?" And by good fortune, I happened to say that to the right person who says, "I know that guy."
And we are extremely grateful, because he has committed time and attended our meetings in the past, and has already given us, you know, served in that advisory capacity, and, and we look forward to having him. Thank you.
I got a couple of questions. This is great, what we're doing. I, I really support it. But I just, I'm not sure where we're going with this. Are we, are we getting away from the EDC and creating another, an EDC? What do we do? I'm not sure yet, you know, what I see here, but the, I know that in your, in your board or the commission, I guess the commission, I don't know, there's a lot of people there, and there's some retired people there.
Correct.
Mostly the people there have a lot of experience in marketing.
Yes, sir.
You know, 'cause I, I probably know most of them on the commission. So I know there are a lot of, they're, they're probably qualified to, to do the work too, but, and those that are retired, I don't know if they've shown some interest or not, but I just wanna make sure that we kind of stay in the middle of make sure that we, everything is, when the time comes that, hey, we're gonna publicize it, we're gonna publicize it and say, "This is what we need," is not because of what we have now. And, and a consultant, I might, you know, I don't, I don't, I'm not too high in consultants when we have to, when you have to extend them, but, you know, sometimes consultants are good, but I think consultants are good for short-term. I don't, you said something about long-term, but I hope long-term would mean a job, not, not a consultant. But I'm not, and I'm not sure, Judge, exactly where we're going with this, so, you know, I'm kinda a little in the middle right now.
I understand. I think Cindy can speak to it, but I will tell you, since I am a voting member of the CCRDC, I'm privileged to be able to sort of share that duty off and on with some of the other commissioners that, that rotate with me. And without really revealing proprietary information, every single one of the things they are chasing, every single deal, and there's at least 12 of them, have to do with the petrochemical market. The NCDC's focus is the direct opposite of that. We, we applaud the CCRDC's $60 billion worth of investment they brought to our community. I think that's an incredible role that they play, but I think the role that we seek is to change our way of life here, and that's what the NCDC, that's why I decided that the Industrial Commission was important, because we were listening to young people and listening to people who are really all ages, who sought a better quality of place, and that's really their focus. It's not to chase the billion-dollar petrochemical plants. It's not to chase the, even the steel or manufacturing plants. It's to bring the type of projects to our community that enhance our convention center, that enhance our shoreline, that enhance our willingness for medical specialists to wanna come live here, or any, quite frankly, high-level executive. But it also translates to just our own children who wanna come back and stay here as well. So whether it's a college student at Delmar College in vocational training, or a CEO's, you know, family, they all, we all want them to love where they live, and we felt that there was a real need to say, "I'll go be a part of a North Beach project and get, we need tentacles here." And because we do not have a planning office in our county, because we do not have a budget office, because we do not have an economic development office in our county, by the way, neither does our city, that's why they support the CCRDC to the great extent that they do. We felt that the NCDC is a wonderful vehicle, but it's just a volunteer board. They're not there being able to chase and work and follow every lead that this office gets. And so we think that the, we, I agree with you. I think in the future, we need to have somebody who sits there in that office, reports nine to five, Monday through Friday. I think Mr. Breyer'd be the first person to tell us that. But the idea of a consultant means you don't have to pay benefits. You are not a, a full-time employee, and this is a department that's being managed by the county and the auditor's office, and so we felt that this was the, the most efficient use of dollars, and you're pairing it with an individual who is kind of a, ask anybody in the economic development world in Texas if they know John Breyer, and the answer is a resounding, "You bet I do." And so you need that in order to pair them with major developers.
And I really like the idea, Commissioner Modest mentioned about Robstown, you know, getting them involved, and even Bishop, you know, Chamber of Commerce and Bishop, you know, they're, they're in the way, the west end of it.
Very good.
And they need to get, you know, they also have...
And don't forget Porta Renz's.
And that, that is absolutely part of our strategic plan.
We're following everybody's cities in, right?
The west side.
Come on, man, don't leave me out.
Ms. Gonzalez, we're certainly not... Commissioner Gonzalez, we're certainly not trying to replace, you know, any other organizations. You probably noticed, I mentioned Ian Vazey's part of, he's an ex officio, and he's been incredibly supportive, he attends our meetings. We just want to be a collaborative partner, but again, with the emphasis on Oasis County.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Vaughn, I think.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm very supportive of this, it's been a long time coming, you know, my area is completely sounded, surrounded by industry, and I support that, but I think that the city needs to diversify as well, with that coming in as well, too. And I like the idea that you have someone that has done it. I'm very familiar with the Midland area, because we're in the oil industry, and it has just prospered, and so I'm excited about having a conversation with him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, just so that you at least know who he is, John, I see you in the audience, would you mind coming to the podium and anything that you want to add? We would welcome your background, and tell us, you're not a foreigner, you know, like you're still from Texas. We're very weird about Corpus, you know, we feel like anyone that's not from here is like a foreigner. But all Texans are not foreign. We love each other.
Let me briefly, most people say that I can't do anything briefly. Let me give it my best shot. Let me give you sort of my background. Let me start off by saying, spent 27 years in the Army, primarily flying helicopters and commanding helicopter units. So I did that. My last Army assignment was in Abilene, Texas. I was in charge of the RTC departments there in Abilene. And that led to my retirement in the early 90s from the Army, not retiring, but from the Army. And Abilene was the first city in the state of Texas to pass the 4A corporation tax. I was hired to, go ahead and set up the first of what is now approximately 530 4A economic development corporations in the state of Texas. And did that in Abilene for four or five years. And then when Governor Bush was governor of Texas, ended up being the executive director of economic development for, at that time, what was a state agency, the economic development side, and did that for a while. And then every, every time a relatively large city in the state of Texas would pass the 4A corporation, I would generally get a call and would be asked to come into that community, whether it was Beaumont, other places, and set up their economic development corporation with the idea that I would set that up, find them somebody that was really good at that, and then that would be my commitment to them. Okay? I did that, and after I left the state, I did it in Beaumont. And then ended up being the, at the Chamber of Commerce in Austin, the vice president for economic development for the Greater Austin Chamber in the early 2000s, when we in Austin at that time were just really generating, becoming a high-tech industry. Got a call, and then went to Midland, as been described, as president of the Midland Chamber of Commerce, because they, it took them three tries to pass the 4A corporation in Midland. I went there as the president of the chamber and set up their economic development program, and had contracts with the city to manage their, not only their 4A corporation, but also their convention center, their CVB, I'm not gonna go any further than that, a wide swath of experience. Let me jump back a little bit. While I spent 27 years in the Army, I met my wife in two days of 50 years in Fort Worth, when I was an instructor pilot, when the Army used to do half of their instruction in the mineral wells. And there's a law, when you marry somebody from Texas, when you retire, you have to come back to the state. And Barbara, Barbara, my wife, was, she grew up here, was born here, grew up here, and so their family owned, you have to reflect back, for those of you that have been in here in Corpus a while, her parents had built the ranch motel that in the 50s, 60s, and 70s-
Remember that?
-looked, oh, looked a lot nicer than it looks, than it looks right now, okay? And then when her parents passed away, we had that for a while, and had some property here. And being originally from St. Louis, I fell in love with Corpus Christi, just because it's so different from the Upper Midwest. And so over the years, have kept up with what goes on here in Corpus Christi. And when the judge first asked me questions about what's going on in Midland, i.e. the whole Permian Basin with oil and gas, I was excited to be able to help. I see the connection between what's happening in the Permian Basin and what's happening here in Corpus Christi is nothing short of a great opportunity for Corpus Christi. The two entities, the Permian Basin and Oasis County, are linked not only by pipelines that are being built every day, but by the industry that joins them together. And it's exciting for me to be able to hopefully add some value as Oasis County looks at how that, this industry, this new oil and gas reality of Texas, how the two, these two entities get joined. I don't think there's ever been a consideration, a big consideration, for me to be a long-term part of this. I see what I'm doing here as being, helping get this off and running for Oasis County, and excited about it. So I don't know how you separate economic development from community development from base preparedness. You know, the military base here has been here for a long time, they're a great stabilizing force, and the, I have, because I did so much economic development in Abilene, Abilene had DIAS Air Force Base. We had to worry about that when it came to BRACs, but more importantly, what we did, we developed programs, not necessarily to protect DIAS, but to grow DIAS Air Force Base. If we grow it, get new roles and missions into your existing military facilities, that's the best way to ensure their long-term viability. So I'm excited, hopefully, to be able to help in this. And I, do you have any questions, I guess is what I would ask?
You know, not necessarily a question, just kind of more of a comment. Judge, I agree with Commissioner Vaughn, I think if we're gonna do this, let's go. I mean, I'm excited about it, I think it's great. I would also kind of echo the thought that if we're gonna do it, then at some point, I would think we would need someone, you know, on staff, full-time here, and if that turns out to be him, great, because he loves Corpus Christi so much, we can just make him move down here.
There you go.
But I would, I guess, maybe it would segue into a question, I mean, would you, I'm not trying to take your consulting contract money out of your own pocket, but would you obviously have the belief that at some point, if this thing gets up and running the way we hope that it will, that it would require more of a full-time staff presence?
Really, absolutely. Matter of fact, I know that the judge and the commission has already been looking at something like that, to find somebody that, young, bright, intelligent, that could be the right person, where I would hope that I could bring my experience and expertise in mentoring that type of a person into growing into what I think Oasis County is looking to have. And by the way, you know, the economic development, there's, I don't think there's ever been a discussion about any type of replacement. I know Ian Vazey, knowing well. And so this is about providing Oasis County the expertise and the voice to do other things other than go after the Exxon, Exxon Mobil cracker, and the next one of those, and the steel companies. That's great, but there are other opportunities here, here in Oasis County. Yeah, I happen to be one, and I've actually talked to Ian Vazey about this, and others here. I think Oasis County has a unique opportunity to do two things, which is very, which is very, very unusual, to have a robust industry segment, petrochemical, steel, whatever it happens to be. But it also has the opportunity, through Corpus Christi A&amp;M, to develop a high-tech industry. It takes two things to have, for a community to have a high-tech industry. It takes a research university, and I know that Texas A&amp;M, Corpus Christi, has been working with the system, with Chancellor Sharp, to develop new research that would be focused on things that's appropriate for here in, here in Oasis County. But the second thing, the second thing you have to have for a research, a high-tech environment, and I, and people laugh about this, but it is absolutely true, and that is, you have to have a beautiful place, because the basic, the basic tenure of a high-tech industry is the intellectual capital created at a research university. Pittsburgh is Pittsburgh because of iron, coal, you know, a river, but Austin, San Jose, Dresden, Germany are places that have great research universities, but they're also beautiful places. And that intellectual capital gets to live wherever it wants to. Corpus has the pos-
It does.
I'm going to stop pontificating, but I think Corpus has a great opportunity, and Oasis has a great opportunity with that.
Sir, I don't think, we don't think you're old either, so don't worry.
Sorry, Carolyn.
Oh, I gotta tell you, yeah, as the former president of the Midland Chamber, it's a beautiful place. And it's beautiful because of the people.
And Colonel, Colonel, you know, you said something that, for a long time now, our community has been struggling with, with the city of Corpus Christi and the county, is, you know, how do we keep our young people, or how do we attract our young people? And that's the key, because industry is great, and we need it, but we need to balance it out. And when somebody who is as successful as this family in the oil and gas industry tells you that we need to diversify, I think that's something that we need to listen, because Commissioner Vaughn is absolutely right. We need to have other opportunities that tie in directly with our universities, and will bring, retain or attract new people, young people, to come to our community and build it up.
Yeah, and it's the complete array of the community development side that does that type of thing. And that's one of the things Midland and the Permian Basin as a whole have been doing over the last year. The great news for Oasis County, in my mind, is Oasis County and Corpus Christi have time. What you see in the $60 billion of new facilities, you have a ramp-up time to, for those to come in. And so you have time to work on the community side, the education, the housing, the other industry side. And Midland didn't have that, the Permian Basin didn't have it. That all happened just like that, and the economy exploded and created all kinds of challenges for them, that that's why their strategic planning process has been so important to them up there.
Well, and I, what I like, I really like what you said about mentoring a young person from our community, hopefully, that we could, we could do, because I think, I've always believed, being from Corpus Christi, and not just, but you can certainly come to Corpus Christi as fast as you can, too, but you, there's a, there's a, there's a different set of passions for those of us who've lived and worked and grown up here than there are for those who haven't. That doesn't mean they can't develop just as strong a one, and that's not to say that you can't at all. But, but having, you know, said what you said about mentoring someone that, maybe a younger person that, and I don't know what young's defined, you know, I don't consider-
Boy, everybody's looking younger these days.
Right. I mean, and young's not the right word, I mean, just a, someone that's got the passion to live and work and be in Corpus Christi, because, you know, that's a big deal. A lot of times, we get people here in Corpus Christi, and they come for a while, and they sew their, you know, they do, and then they move on. And that's okay, too. But, but certainly, for those of us, and pretty much everybody, well, not pretty much, everyone up here on this DIAS, and most of the people in this room are very committed to Oasis County and Corpus Christi, and the people that are on that board have done a great job with very little resources to do it with, and so we need to provide the resources to that. But I'm very, very enthused to hear you say that, you know, you would mentor someone and bring that person along, because like I said, if we're gonna do this, let's do it. It's gonna cost some money, but, you know, things that are good sometimes just do. I think at the same time, the return on investment, I'm a big return on investment person, you know, what I would hope that you would come back and readily do on a quarterly or whatever basis, the judge and the commission thinks appropriate, to come tell us, "Hey, this is what you, this is the bang you've gotten for your buck this month, or this quarter, or whatever." That would help us as well, too.
That's what I would hope to be able to do. I, I'm excited about this, because I'd like to take my 20-something years of economic development experience and impart that to somebody that's young, aggressive, and wants to do that here in Corpus Christi. The other thing I've been doing for the last five or six years has been working a lot with industry, and that's a wide variety of industry, helping them in their business development. A lot of these are international companies, you know, and kudos to the county, and the city, and the port for what's happening right now with the bridge, what's happening with the deepening and widening. Those are things that are desperately important. And by the way, if somebody needs to get a shepherd's hook and pull me off, please go, please go ahead.
I'm gonna make a motion, sir, you're convinced this-
Oh, see, that's what happens, that's what I do, too. I just talk, and talk, and talk.
If you don't mind, sorry.
Second.
No, you are, as they say, that's good. So we have a motion and a second. Carolyn, you have a question?
Where's the money coming from?
Yeah, I just want to double-check that. The funding source is our special revenue, and, look, Sean's here representing the port, but I am grateful to the Port Commission in its entirety that last year heard our call and said, "We want to do the same thing San Pat's doing, we want to promote our own county." Port of Corpus Christi acknowledged with an allocation of $90,000. So that, those dollars are flowed to a special revenue account, Dale, I can't remember the number, but it's a, it's an account that we have the money, so we don't have to allocate any funds, Commissioner.
That's correct. Department 1389 is the new department we set up for this particular function. We've received the 12,000 that you have mentioned before. We're working with the county attorney to do another contracted agreement with the port for the 90,000, and they'll come in increments of $18,000 for five payments.
And, and I think that other people shouldn't be supporting us solely, so some, in that when we do our new budget, you know, allocation, I will be advocating, we better be able to say, if it's important to us, that we're, you know, put in some money ourselves this next budget cycle. In the meantime, Cindy Barrera and the rest of her commission have acknowledged that she probably needs to pay some house calls to other political jurisdictions to see what they'll put in, and then maybe do one fundraiser, and I'm just gonna go ahead and say it publicly, John, I'd like to see Secretary Evans deliver that same amazing speech he did when you and I heard him two weeks ago, where he mentioned Corpus Christi and Port Corpus Christi no less than five times. We'd love to host him here in a luncheon that maybe raises another 50,000, because, you know, you want to have a healthy budget. But so, but for now, Commissioner, no money needed at this moment.
Well, I want to thank Sean Strawbridge and the Port of Corpus Christi. I think sometimes they go unnoticed on the things they do, and y'all have been great for the county. Thank you.
I gotta tell you, between the port and the university and the community at large here, when I take a look at this in the future, Corpus and Oasis County have a great opportunity.
Thank you, John. So we've got a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign.
Judge, that's a great segue into the next one.
It is.
Instead of, and I'm gonna, you know, since Sean's here, is, would there be, instead of having to go lease a space over there, I mean, isn't the port building a brand-new building or something, that we couldn't get some free space over there?
A great idea in the new year. Well, you know, it's not ready yet, right? Hey, but Brent, I like the way you're thinking.
You know, I'd rather not lease a space that I don't have to, and make-
So, so that is a good, poor Sean, right?
Make another building, too.
Poor Sean. Actually, Commissioner Modas also was asking me prior to this meeting, also about, hey, look, item number seven is the next one, it's, I'm sorry for all those that are waiting, but it really does make sense to segue quickly into that, and this is to approve a lease. I have been noticed by the county attorney that it's not ready, so rather than tabling it, what I'd like to- it, what I'd like to see is a motion to authorize the county attorney to continue negotiating on the lease, bring it back to court upon its ratification.
But I would, I mean, but in all seriousness, I would, I would really, while you're doing that, I would like to look at other options, because I, if there's ways to save money, I'm all, I'm all in, but I don't, I don't love that we, I don't love that we lease a lot of space, you know, anyway, because we do that all over, and I've traditionally voted against most of those leases, not because I don't necessarily support some of what's going on in those places, but I don't, I don't like some of those. So if there is a serious option, a serious way to look at some, some space there that could be an in-kind contribution or something like that-
Right, so, so when we bring back this lease to you, what you're gonna see is that there is a grant that's associated with it, and you're also gonna see that when you apply the grant, that you're looking at under a dollar a square foot. And there's probably no better oper, I try to be the hardest horse trader I know, and so I think that you'll see that this is a real competitive, but still arms-length agreement in proximity to the courthouse where we can all reach. Tower Two is literally a parking lot away, is what I like to say. And, and then the other thing is, is that we did look for space here in the courthouse. In fact, the, the commission meets here in our commissioner's court. But the truth is, is that when you're entertaining developers and when you're entertaining people, we really need a space where we can access and work. It needs to be like a working station, and if anyone's ever been to, like, the Grand Canal Rooms, the islands, it would be very similar to that, where there would be a lot of whiteboards and a lot of opportunity to have meetings there. And trust me, if this means you'll support our digitization effort and get rid of the sixth-floor mess, I'm all for it. But right now, we're struggling here at the courthouse with space, and, but as we get more efficient, yes, I'd love to either bring it back home, or, but even Sean will tell you that it needs to be an arms-length agreement, and he would definitely have to charge, you know, rent. You can't just give free rent as another political jurisdiction. Having said that, that's gonna be one of the most iconic new buildings coming up here in the next year or so when it finishes, and nothing would please me more than to see the NCDC there. But without putting him on the spot, how about if we just say, can you think about it?
We'd just like it to be a serious consideration.
I think, I think you should go to him and-
Free is good.
Um, but anyway, when we get to the lease-
This would be a three-year term.
It'll be a three-year term.
Three-year term?
A three-year term. Having said that, let us, let us make the, I'd like to make the motion that we authorize the county attorney to continue the negotiation and then bring it back to us. And I've got a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, wow. So I'm just gonna make a quick comment. We're gonna go back in order and quickly do the consent agenda, if that's possible. Before I make that motion, I mean, bring that back, are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be removed at this time?
Judge, please table 3L.
3L needs to be tabled.
We'll bring it back.
Let's go ahead and take a motion for that, commissioners. Can I get a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Are there any others, commissioners?
Item E, H-
Wait, what do you?
E, H, and U.
Oh, you don't consent?
E, H, and U as an umbrella?
These are just really quick comments.
Like comments? Okay.
When did we table 3L?
3L.
3L.
Um, do I have any others, Commissioner?
3L. No consent, okay.
Yeah, P. I didn't know what, P.
Okay, P. All right. Guys, let's take them, the others, please. I would like a motion to accept on the consent agenda, all items with the exception of E, H, P, and U. May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. The SAS software as a solution, Commissioner Modis.
Thank you.
Would you like to hear from someone, or do you have a?
Who's, who's?
I'd like to ask Michael or Lance to come forward.
Either or.
Michael, Lance, just come on up forward in case there's a question that you could be a resource on.
So I'm, I'm familiar with Granicus, because we, we use that at the city. I don't know if they're still using that software, but it was pretty helpful, and that was the first time that I had ever dealt with electronic agenda, and it made life a lot simpler and easier. So this is gonna help us with the process of just, I guess, screening and applications for the boards, is that what it is?
Yes, and the public display of, of, of those. So it's a kind of all-in-one solution. It's kind of like its own little mini HR department, because that's really what managing all those boards and the appointments has kind of become. So instead of spreadsheets, they're gonna be able to do it in there, and then whatever is entered into the system is then posted. So job posting, or hire, I don't know how to reference it, but board appointment openings will be displayed in a web version. It'll really help out Margaret especially. And it is Granicus, which is also the people who bought our website, the Vision Corporation or whatever they were before, is now part of Granicus. So Granicus is kind of becoming a direction we're moving voluntarily and involuntarily.
And just remind everybody, the funding source on this.
Funding source is part of the tax notes, I believe.
That's correct. That's called a CO 2019.
2019, yes.
And this was designated as part of our-
Yeah, so that's project number 1923-8001, software as a service of the 2019 tax notes. This is a DIR purchase, so it meets the competitive bidding requirements of the Purchasing Act.
Have been met. Okay, anyone have any other questions for Michael or Lance?
This is reviewed by Tyner's Group and everybody involved, and we recommend approval.
Recommend approval.
When we implement, we're gonna come back to court and have a presentation and show the court how it works, and show the public how it works.
Sounds wonderful.
Motion.
Motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, let's move on to H, please. These are the tax deeds that kind of reveals letters, I'm not letters, excuse me, numbers one through 11. And Commissioner Modis.
Thank you, Judge. Marvin, I know, I usually pull this every time it comes up, and it's just remind ourselves and the public that, you know, when we bid these out, that the, the bidder should, the winner should receive a notice from the county, through, I don't know, through county attorney. They helped prepare public works years, a few years back, when Glenn Sullivan was still here, just to educate the purchaser that there may not be any infrastructure connected to these properties, and it's kind of more, I won't say as-is, but it's kind of a, make it, make the buyer aware of what's available on those properties, because, you know, I've heard it a lot, you know, we, we can bid out these properties that were, we've, we've taken because of lack of payment, and then we could potentially be selling to someone who then takes a property thinking, oh, no, I didn't, I didn't know I had no water connection or no utilities of any sort. So I just want the, the public, the, the winners of, of these bids, and remind ourselves again that we do have that document in place that we put together back a few years ago, and that they, I'm hoping that they continue to receive that, so that they're aware, that they don't come back, and that there's not any claim that could be made against us, that we're selling a property knowingly that it's, doesn't have any infrastructure, that they, they know what they're getting into when they buy it, they're made aware of it, and because I think that that would solve a lot of issues or questions that I hear come up from time to time.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Commissioner, and thank you for bringing that up again. Basically, what we do is, we attach that document in English and Spanish to all the copies of the notices of sale that we hand out for our primary tax sales, the sheriff's sales. And then if property is struck off, we compile that, and we have a spreadsheet, basically a document that we send out to folks that want to make offers on property, and there's an offer form that they fill out, and it references the document, and the document is attached to that in the list. And then the successful bidder, when I send them the letter that basically says, "Congratulations, bring me the money," it has that attached to that, along with the form that they fill out, to let me know how they want the deeds prepared and so forth. And then when they come in with the money, we have them sign off on yet another document that says in the body, "I have received, read, and understand the notice from Nuasis County regarding purchasing property." So we, we cover it as many ways as we can.
Yeah, I don't know if notice in the attachment, I didn't see it, but can we get a copy of that, just to kind of remind the court of what's being given?
Sure, I can send that out.
To the public, or to the winners.
I'll just, I can, I can just email to everybody a copy of the most current resale list with the offer form and the, and the document attached to it. I'll be glad to do that later today.
Marvin, do we have something in Bishop here? Do we have something in Bishop? I thought we had something in Bishop.
Yes, we have several in Bishop.
Is there someone in this group here? I don't reckon, I don't reckon.
Um, no, sir, I don't think there, there are in this group. The last, the last two times I've been here, you've approved some stuff in Bishop, and we're gonna be bringing in some more also.
Okay.
A motion to accept.
Okay, we've got a motion to accept, and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
Marvin, can you, can you see me later, Marvin, please? I have another question, I'll just, I ask you later. I need to clarify something in Bishop.
Okay, yes, yes, sir.
Can you give me a call later?
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll proceed to, to letter P, and that's to adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant obligation, application to the office of the governor, and for the purposes of acquiring land to prevent encroachment near the Navy Outlying Landing Field Cabinus. And with us, we have Maria, and Ben Pollock also is here to provide background. Maria, take us just through the grant itself, and then let's let Ben kind of give us the background of DAG, the importance of it, and if we were to be successful, what that would imply.
Okay.
And, and of course, the funding source, and if you want to defer the funding source to Dale or myself, you can. I'm not sure if they've-
So there is a change to the funding source from what was in your agenda packet. So originally, we had identified 2015 certificates of obligation. The funding source is now, it's 1901-2700, which is major capital project contingencies. So this project is kind of the first that we've ever done, at least in the past 10 years. So we are partnering with Naval Air Station Corpus Christi on this, it's, we call it DAG, it's Defense Economic Adjustment Assistance Grant. So we're partnering with them. There's a property outside of Cabinus Field that is in the hands of a private property owner, and the purpose of this project is to acquire an easement on that property to prevent, you know, development that's not compatible with the, the use of the airfield. I believe it's called a clear zone. So we were approached by NAS Corpus Christi on this project, this first time, you know, we, Nuasis County has partnered with them, so we're excited that we're able to assist in this project. And again, you know, it goes to the governor's office, the Texas Military Preparedness Commission is, is aware of that we're gonna be submitting an application. So with that, any other specific questions, I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Pollock.
Yeah, I think I'm gonna let, and I also want to recognize Ginny Cross is here from the Chamber of Commerce, who really heads up the South Texas Military Preparedness, I'm sorry, South Texas Military Task Force, but also through the Texas Military Preparedness Office. We have two members, actually, that are very active, and so because of our activity as a county on this task force, these types of opportunities have come forth. As Maria says, it's the first one, but it's not the first one for our community. City of Corpus Christi did a water redundancy line, and also did a security perimeter fencing. Naval Air Station Kingsville has also been a recipient of these funds, but it wasn't until the last two years that we really started getting our fair share of funds. And, and there was a real effort by this community and the task force to say, we want to be aggressive, to go after it, and of course, the reason always is to protect mission. Why do we want to protect mission? Ben, come tell everybody what kind of a billion-dollar impact it is in our community, and give us a little background of why you think the, the court should consider this, this grant.
Well, good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Ben Pollock, I'm the Community Planning Liaison Officer, Mission Sustainment Officer as well for the base. So really, what my job is, is to protect all of our military installations from Cabinus, Waldron, the main field, and also Goldie Hat, because that's where all of the Sinatra, the Training Command starts all their basic flight training, and then goes on to the fleet to take care of business out there to make us safe. We did, as Judge said earlier, last year, two years ago, we did partner with the City of Corpus Christi through the DAG program, and actually won. We're the very first Navy installation in the state of Texas to win this grant. Not only are they given to the Army or the Air Force throughout the state, but this was the very first time that that happened. What that did for us is that did give us additional water line to have redundancy to the base. And right now, the mission, from the Department of Defense, is protect these bases, and what can we do to keep the resiliency and redundancy to these bases, so we can continue to support the warfighter out there? The DAG grant that we would like to partner with the county is about the encroachment issue. What we are all trying to protect is that we don't have buildings or any type of obstacles, obstructions right off the end of our runway. So the clear zone over at the Cabinus Field is actually located in Nuasis County, just right across Oso Creek. That is the last clear zone that is not protected around that airfield. Every other one, we either own it, or the city actually owns one of our clear zones right now. We're in the process of doing a land exchange with them to get that back and give them some excess property that we had. So with the commitment of the county and through the state of Texas, these funds would allow us to purchase this easement, and also the landowner doesn't want to sell right now. So all we can really do is put a restrictive use easement to keep anything from being built there at that time. Also, we'd like to have the first right of refusal as well. But with this, with the funds, if we can get this purchased, it's gonna protect the mission and keep that runway open and allow the operations to continue, and put the pilots out there to support our country.
And Ben, if we were to be successful, when would we hear from DAG about our success as a, in this particular grant? And I guess I'm asking for a month or year.
Oh, well, application deadline is the 28th of February, so the, you know, the grant is, is ready to go with the approval of the commission. So we would probably be looking at maybe the, it would be within this year, obviously, if we, if we know that we won or not. So if we win, then what would happen is we would have two years to complete the transaction and show the state that the money was spent on what it was intended for.
And do we know the, so it says, it lists here the property value between $1,150,000 to $1,500,000, is that correct? Or that's where the-
Yes.
-property was assessed at?
Yeah, so talk about the allocation, and talk about, and the reason I wanted Ben to talk about the timing, is if we were to be successful, we would have time in the next year's fiscal budget to create, it would be a commitment today to create this contingency liability, but why don't you talk about the, the amount of money that the county would pay versus the state? And then let's let Ben have a, a chance to also tell us about the opportunity that we, if we were to be successful and we did make this appropriation, that we could also continue our quest to go to DOD and seek reimbursement perhaps at a later time. This is just a need right now. Go ahead.
We did receive a updated property appraisal, so it's current. We just got it earlier this month. The actual value of the easement is between $1,125,000 to $1,275,000. This is, we're requesting an 80/20 match, so the county would match it by 20%, which at the maximum would be $255,000.
So we're going off of the appraised value, so the property owner cannot say, "I want it for $5 million"?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, and then, I believe-
I want to make sure on that.
Yeah, and then I believe the timeline moving forward, what's listed in the application guidebook is, I think they're making funding decisions as early as April of this year.
In this buying the whole property, or just the?
That is purchasing the easement. So the property itself is valued at 1.5 million for the 50 acres, and then the, the purchase of the easement is valued at between 75 and 85% of that amount. So that's where the one point, it's a little less than 1.5 million.
So the reason that, by the way, this was discussed and approved at the Milit, South Texas Military Task Force, which is obviously very important to us, that we make sure that we have complete support. I believe the Chamber of Commerce also, oh my goodness, sent a letter of support as well. And Gary Bradford, who is the governor's representative, is also very supportive of this effort. So we did our vetting commissioners to make certain that this was the project they wanted to advance, that this was the most important project to the Navy and to the captain, to the CO, the base, and also Sinatra as well. So it's, this is the one that they need, and the good news is, is that if we are successful, So it's, this is the one that they need, and the good news is, is that if we are successful, we as a Commissioners Court will have some time in our budget cycle to make this appropriation. And then we will work very hard with Ben and company, and go make our pitch in, in Washington to say, we've done this, but, you know, is there a way that you could reimburse, so that we can have money to do the next great project?
And, and that's, that's correct. What we're trying to do, like, secure the funds now, get this property secure, that way, we don't have to worry, obviously, because we don't have any zoning authority out there in the county right now, like we do for Waldron or the others, they can zone and, and protect our area. So if we can get this secured now, my plan is to try to obtain funding from the military or the Department of Navy to come back and purchase the easement from the county. And then therefore, it'll be owned by the Navy after that, so.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Thank you, Ben, for your work. Maria, thank you. There's last one, I believe it's the process to approve the application procedure for the appointment of the Port of Corpus Christi Authority of Nuasis County. And I'm gonna refer to Tyner, he's got all the dates for you and the process. Commissioner Modis.
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about the dates publicly, just so...
Okay. What we're recommending is posting the board today, beginning today, opening it today, to set applications. We would close this on Tuesday, March 10th, that's a full three weeks, I believe, and then we would put on the agenda for March 18th for the court to appoint.
Judge, I, you know, I know this is, you know, talking about the application procedure...
Yes.
But, you know, I'd like to also discuss a little bit about just the screening. You know, the, the public, I think, will want and, and expect us to be as transparent as possible. So with every discussion, I hope that we can do this in open session. I know there may be times or information we need to share in executive session, and, and I do respect that, but I want, you know, the public to, to understand that we are gonna be open about this, because we realize this is a very important position. This is an opportunity to replace someone who's given great service to, to the port in our community, and so we know that this position opens up again in December, but really, this, you know, is the potential of really someone going for a full term beyond this, just the next several months. So I, I just want to be able to have that opportunity, really talk out loud about our picks, or our, our selections, our reasoning and why, because the media and the public can so quickly try to draw their own conclusions when they don't hear from us. And so I think it's really important that we dictate that message, so the community will understand, well, I'm picking candidate A because of his or her experience in the community, because we need someone who represents this interest, because that's valuable on this port. Whatever our reasoning is, I think we really need to do that, other than just casting a vote. Because I, once again, I, you know, I've seen how it went through the city, and how it played out more in the media, than really allowing the council to kind of dictate or explain their reasoning. But I think for us, we need to do it better. And we have, we've done that before, when we, when we appointed our sheriff, who's here in the room, we did it publicly. We, we did all of that as, as a chance to be transparent, right? We talked about that, Commissioner Vaughn, and so I'd just like that opportunity for the port, since this is not a reappointment, this is an opportunity to, to make a selection, and I think we, we owe it to, to allow us individually, and as a court as a whole, to explain our reasoning why, rather than to say, I want candidate A, and see how many votes he or she gets.
Okay, thank you.
Is that a motion, or just...
Well, I think it's a comment.
It's a comment tied into this process, because I know this is more about the dates and just setting up that...
Right, this particular agenda item was just to conserve the, the dates, and, and well noted, thank you. So do I have a motion to approve letter U?
Yes.
And a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. That completes the consent agenda, and now we will move into the regular agenda, return to item number 4A1. And at this time, we have Ms. Linda Fig, who would like to comment, and who did indicate that she has comment regarding item 4A1, so I'll call her to the dais, and welcome, Ms. Fig. And then we're gonna follow that up with the, the new, with actually a complete update by Flatiron Dragados on the Harbor Bridge.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge Canales, and members of the Commissioners Court. I'm Linda Fig, President, CEO, and owner of Fig Bridge Engineers, and we have been working as the lead engineer for the past four years with Flatiron Dragados on your new Harbor Bridge project. It's a pleasure to meet you today, and my purpose of wanting to speak is to really share with you our goodwill and commitment to Nuasis County and to the Corpus Christi region. With that commitment, I wanted to share with you some information about our company, Fig Bridge Engineers. We've been achieving some of the United States' most important bridges over the last 42 years, and since 1987, all major precast concrete cable state bridges for US highways have been designed by Fig. We are a second-generation company that was started by my father while I was in engineering school, and we are a people that are dedicated and passionate about bridges. We exclusively specialize in bridges, and our bridges are battle-tested. We have over 35 miles of bridges along the Gulf and Atlantic Coasts that have been hit by major hurricanes over the years, and they have stood strong without damage. We have over 2.8 million vehicles that cross over Fig Bridges every day throughout the country. They have received 424 awards of excellence, including three presidential awards through the National Endowment for the Arts. Different US presidents have only given this award five times for bridges. And our team received the highest technical score in the competition, selecting our team for your important bridge. We are honored to continue to serve the community and TechDOT in achieving this bridge successfully. Safety is our top priority, as well as quality, because this is, will be a sustainable bridge that has a much longer life than most bridges are designed to today. I just wanted to share with you my personal commitment, and open the door to meet with you, to discuss our company and our qualifications at any time. There has been misinformation out there concerning a construction accident that occurred in Florida a couple of years ago, and I want to be able to clear that up with as many people as I can. So we are here for you, we are concerned about the success of your new bridge, and are dedicated to do everything to help make this project a success and realize the community's vision. We want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to meet you here today, and I know that you're gonna be getting an update from Lynn Allison and John Palmer. They are great members of the Flatiron Dragados team, and the, the precasting operation for this project, I just want you to know, is really a model in the country for construction. It is a tremendous operation, beautifully done, using lots of local labor, local materials, and this bridge will be done with great success, and I just want you to know, you have our commitment for that.
Thank you, Ms. Fig. And what I would like to do now is invite Dragados to come up and do their presentation, and if you wouldn't mind staying, and then allowing the Commissioners to ask questions of both Flatiron or Fig, would that be suitable to, to your pleasure, Commissioners? Give them the chance, and then you can come back and, and ask questions of either Ms. Fig or Flatiron. But we'll give you a chance to be uninterrupted and allow you to do your presentation, and then we'll loop back with you.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Commissioners, and wow, that's a tough act to follow. I just wanted to share with you, given sort of that unexpected leadoff, that we are here to talk about the construction update, and my colleagues and myself are, we're here to build a bridge and working through this construction project. And with that, I know most of, all of you quite well, actually, and I'm very proud to stand before you, so I don't need to introduce myself, but I would like to introduce our deputy project manager, John Palmer, and our manager of traffic, Darrell Chambers, who have collectively over 50 years of experience, and they'll help me with this presentation, and they're actually gonna make it easy with me. So we're gonna hand this off bit by bit, but they have over 50 years of, of experience in this industry and institutional knowledge that I hope puts a lot of this community at ease with the caliber of people working on this project. So with that, let me kind of go through some of these initial slides I'm gonna go through quickly, because you've all heard a lot of the essence of this bridge. You can see in the photograph that the existing bridge that we have now kind of comes east of Waterburger, I'm sorry, comes, yeah, east of Waterburger Field, and the new bridge will come west of Waterburger Field and tie into Crosstown Expressway or State Highway 286. It's comprised of six lanes, and it is, each, each northbound, southbound, has 10-foot buffers on each side of the three lanes, including the 10-foot buffer on side of the 10-foot shared-use pedestrian walkway. The scope of the work includes reconstruction of almost six and a half miles of highway and roadways, which is, you can't hardly drive around this part of town and not encounter some of the work we have going on. One thing I'd like to kind of mention is that what Commissioner Chesney said while ago was talking about return on investment, and if, if you see some of the, the images and the renderings of this bridge, you'll see that although we're delayed, the, the skyline and how it will change and beautify connecting Nuasis and San Patricio Counties and these two industrial cultures, I hope you'll find to be worth the wait. So you've probably seen this before, and I don't want to get into the aesthetics too much of this bridge, but this image here shows you just how large and massive this new cable state bridge will be, and how it truly dwarfs the existing Harbor Bridge. The, the, the top of the two north and south pylon towers are 130 feet taller than the taller tower, the south tower of the American Bank Building, the American Bank Plaza downtown. And you can also see that the, the main span of the bridge is the length of five and a half football fields. The navigational clearance, which is really essential to the, the industry and the commerce coming through the Ship Channel, is 205-foot navigational clearance. So that is, leads into the, the design of the approaches and getting on and off of the bridge. The main tower height is actually 538 feet, so, and the main span length of the bridge is 1,661 feet. You've heard about the aesthetic lighting that's coming up, there will be, you know, immeasurable changes to the lighting that can be done for various holidays and patriotic and, and themes like St. Patrick's Day. With that, I'm gonna ask for John to come and give a construction update, but as I was coming to work this morning, I hope you all see the progress. If you drive down Ocean Drive, you can see the north approach really taking shape on a clear day, and just parking, I was at the RTA building earlier for a committee meeting, and walking from our office at the port into the RTA building, and then even to here, you can hear the pile driving going on. So if anyone thinks this project is stopped and stalled, please think again, because you can hear it and you can see it. And with that, I'll let John come up here.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, for letting us do a project update. We like to share our progress of how we're doing, and share some of our milestones with everybody. On this map here, it's kind of hard to see, but we're trying to break this project up into different areas, so up at the top of the page here, we've got, we'll call our north approach, or north, north roadworks area, and then we go into the north approach, then there's the cable stay part in the middle there, which sometimes we refer to the main span, and that's the part that's on pause right now. Then we have the south approach area and the south roadworks. And of course, we see where the south roadworks is where we got that whole area tore up there by Leopard and Crosstown Expressway and all that, where that comes together. So on the precast yard, as of last week here, we've cast over 1,255 segments out of the 2,600 segments that'll be there, and we've delivered 380 of those segments to the, to the north side, and we've installed, over 350 of those have been installed. On the north approach, on the north approach, where we've, we've installed 86% of the piling, the last bit of piling that we'll be doing, will be right there, kind of like we're Burleson, where eventually the, the bridge will come down on the existing roadway area there, so we have the, the fair amount of piling installed there. So the, the people on the north beach area there can rest assured for maybe a good year or so, it'll be nice and quiet over there, no more pile driving, so that'll be nice for them. But later on, we will have to install a few more. Also, 86% of the footings are installed on the north side, and the, and we've installed, we've completed 20 of the 42 spans over there with the gantry crane. So then later on, probably like in late June or early July sometime, we'll be dismantling the gantry crane and moving it to the south side. Going on to the, the pylons there, the north pylon, we will pour that up to lift 10, which is where the nodal zone comes, where they actually, those two legs come together. And also on the south side, we're, we're paused right there at Port 11. You will see we have some form work up there on the south side, that we're gonna take it down for safety reasons for now, until, until that reevaluation gets done there, and then we'll be putting it back up again. Okay? Yeah, so that was on the south, the south there, where we, you can see some of the form work up there on that angled piece there, we're actually taking some of that down for safety reasons, until we can put it back up again. On the south approach, here you see quite a few things going on in the south approach here, you see in one picture there, you see this, the new Salt Flat Channel, where it was moved over, and it's basically almost four times the size it was before, to accommodate all the flooding in that area. Here also, we've installed 73% of the piling, so we have a little bit more to go there before the stakeholders and residents can stop listening to that hammer over there. We've done 40% of the footings, and 20% of the column work, so we have still quite a ways to go on the columns. In the big picture here, you're looking at that big concrete wall right there, is what we call the south abutment. So on, on this side of the picture here will be earthwork up to there, and then after that is where it'll take off on the approach, going up in the air. Also in these pictures here, you see some of the, the direct connectors starting to form up, and show, show their structure, what they're gonna look like for the ramps that go on and off of 181 onto either I-37, okay? There's also another picture of the south interchange down there, showing some of the direct connectors, and then in the main part of the picture there is you see the shared use path, that'll be the path that the cyclist and walkers will be able to take up and over the bridge. And also too, you can kind of see it way off in the distance over here, there's the arch bridge on Lake Street, so Lake Street doesn't exist right now, but eventually Lake Street will be connected to backup over there. And Winnebago, off to the left of the picture, is the street that goes away now. And then here, this is out on County Road 36, we're just trying to help out the county out there in Robstown, the city of Robstown, to, I guess, way last summer, the wooden bridge that was in here was decommissioned by TechDOT, and so we're building back there a, a concrete culvert bridge for County Road 36.
And John, I appreciate that. Judge, we'll, we'll get a formal announcement about this soon, but there's been a lot of partnerships that we've had with my office, with some of my budgeting to help finance that, along with, it's a city of Robstown issue, it's actually within the city of Robstown, but it's on our County Road 36, and so we, we appreciate Flatiron Dragados for being a big partner in this, and helping us achieve really some, I think, a great project that could be a model for future projects, not necessarily involving them, but just how government works and should work efficiently, but we couldn't do it without Flatiron Dragados, so we appreciate their work on that.
Yeah. The original plan, just a little fun note there, the original plan was to use a couple of the precast segments that were used as test samples, but then we determined it was probably just cheaper and easier for everybody to put in a regular box culvert bridge, so. This next slide here is, is actually showing just a few different things, but one of the main things about this slide we wanted to talk about is, is there's been some questions coming up about drainage off of the main span of the bridge, and the approaches of bridge, and where all that water gonna go. So on the north side, the, the, all the drainage goes in, discuppers off of the bridge, down onto the approach, and it'll drop down somewhere after Bridgeport Avenue into a box culvert system that drains right into the Rincon Channel. And then on the south side, it, it gets, runs all the way out to a downspout down by Broadway, between Broadway and Brewster, into a box culvert system that'll tie into that channel over there that eventually ties into the Salt Flat Channel. Okay, so just so everybody knows, so none of it's dropping on city property or port property or whatever coming off the bridge, it's being routed into, to regular waterways. property or whatever coming off the bridge, it's being routed into, to regular waterways and it's not gonna affect any of the city drainage system either, okay? And that's it? Yeah.
Honorable Judge and Commissioners, my name is Darryl Chambers, I'm a maintenance of traffic engineer for this project. And we can't build anything out here without moving traffic around, it's, it's a fact of life. Up in North Beach right now, we're working on some of the frontage road area of a detour, which in fact requires us to close a lot of the intersections. However, we do keep the residents' needs in mind and we keep Gulf Spray open during this process to allow access mid-block. And we're working with the city on which streets we do close and notify them and the residents. But also on the south side, as everybody was aware coming to work today, Leopard has some lane closures, it's gonna be that way for a while. But the good news is, we're also working at opening up new ramps, new frontage roads to alleviate some of this. As we move forward in our construction, we'll be shifting road closures around, but the one thing we do keep in mind on all of our lane closures, all of our road closures, is the traveling public. That includes the tourists. We avoid closing roadways and include, and doing lane shifts on holidays. That includes this upcoming spring break, so that, we're not gonna be doing any lane closures during spring break, that will impact the, the tourists that are so vital to this community. Crosstown Freeway has, uh, frontage roads being closed, new ramps, uh, Port Avenue, we're fixing to be shifting traffic there, move it to the new pavement along with utilizing new pavement on the east and west bell frontage roads, that's coming up very soon. And I want to thank you.
So I just, I have a few final comments before you, um, I'm sure I have plenty of questions, but, um, I work very closely with Darryl. As a matter of fact, I kind of think of myself as command center because every call that comes in about every pothole or every citizen that has a concern over their storefrontage or access to their driveways comes through me and I work with Darryl and our roadways manager on a hour-to-hour basis. So, in addition to all these project communications that I work on with, with my assistant Julie Lugo, who's a tremendous help, we are constantly fielding calls from citizens, uh, construction workers and working with our team to try to make sure anyone who has an issue gets addressed immediately. On the fun side of things, uh, I am fortunate enough to get to go out in front of the community and we have several of these neat projects coming up. We try to stay in close contact with our stakeholders and although we don't get to tell everyone what they want to hear all the time, we, we are always there to stand before them and answer their questions. We have a couple of events coming up, which you've all received an invitation to, a breakfast with the builder. We host one at Howard's Barbecue to kind of accommodate the Oviedo Williams Center uh, attendees and the residents of the Washington Coles Hillcrest, sort of this area around the bridge and where the new, the new south approach and access to the bridge will take shape. Um, we have an event in April called a sidewalk talk and I'm not sure, I think I've seen photos of the judge signing a segment maybe at one of these events and we'll do this at North Beach where we'll have several of our project managers there to talk about how the gantry crane works and how those segments are set over there. Um, we have a couple of events coming up that I'll do, um, a demonstration at Miller High School and Moody High School, their, um, science and to, science and technology programs. Uh, we'll, I'll do a preview of some videos and what goes on out at our precast yard and how those segments are, are set and then we take the students on a tour out there and the technical aspect of this and, and like Ms. Fig was talking about earlier, these precast segments that, that compose this bridge are, they weigh a hundred and thirty, up to a hundred and thirty tons and the way they're set and cast being one set right next to the next and set together that way and matched that way is, it's a pretty phenomenal process. So, all of our information that Darryl spoke about on traffic is online. I submit all the traffic advisories to the public and we typically give two days' notice when we're doing a, you know, less than forty-eight hour closure or two weeks' notice if we're doing a longer-term road closure. So those project communications can be found through our website, through our social media, Facebook, Twitter, what have you. And that's sort of our conclusion and if anybody has any questions, I'm sure.
I'll open it up to Commissioners at this time, Commissioner Vaughn?
First off, thank y'all for the presentation, I know you're very busy. Uh, there's been a lot of comments and I'm sure you've heard them, they're frustrated because the bridge is delayed. Well, I think the majority of the citizens don't care how long it takes, as long as it's safe and I for one agree with that. Um, a couple of questions, uh, the letter that was sent out from Text Dot, just want to clarify something that's in here, it says, Flatiron Drag, I can't even pronounce it, Flatiron to remove its engineering design firm Fig from future engineering work on the main span of the bridge. They're going to be still involved, they're just not gonna be involved with the main span of the bridge, is that correct?
Yeah, so Fig and Fig's sub consultants are very.
If you don't mind, if you would approach, just because we're on video.
So Fig and their sub consultants are, are still involved with the approaches and the roadworks part of the project? Okay, so it's just that main span, the part that's over the water that's on pause right now?
And so y'all are looking for someone to?
Correct.
To do that, okay. Okay, and I was on the, I'm on the North Beach test force, so I, I am very concerned about, you know, North Beach. So in layman's terms, I've talked to you about this and I just don't understand it. Um, they're talking about they need another exit, you've got one and so you talked to me about the steepness of the bridge going up, so explain to me, because I don't get it, just from a layperson, that, here's what I think the thought process is, you're going down, so I'm thinking, you got an exit going down, why can't you do another one? So can you explain to me why not?
Yeah, so because of the height of the bridge, the new bridge being the two hundred and five feet, you know, navigational clearance compared to the other one being what, a hundred and thirty-eight, just, and then also too, this new bridge is not as steep as the other one, the other ones, the old bridge is almost over a six percent grade, this one's a little bit less than four percent grade. So by the time you get to land on the north side over there, you're still quite a bit higher than you were before and the geometry just did not work to get down there in a fashion that, that would meet Text Dot or even Ash Toe standards to, you know, otherwise it'd be incredibly steep, unsafe ramp. So, and then if you were to squeeze in another, trying to squeeze in another one, the other thing that happens is that you have to have an off-ramp out of there, obviously getting back up on, heading towards the causeway, so there's that ramp right now that gets up on the causeway and we have one that comes down right there before Beach Avenue. If you're trying to figure out a way to squeeze in another one, you also run out of space because you have to have a thousand feet clearance between off-ramps and on-ramps and such or whatever, so there's just not enough space to make it work.
So when you exit, are you gonna have two lanes exiting or just one?
I think it's a, I don't know.
It's one lane.
Ramp, but, but the frontage road is a two-lane frontage road, right?
Uh, three-lane.
Oh, three-lane.
Three-lane on the frontage road.
Three-lane, so there's one-lane ramp coming down to a three-lane frontage road and then you'll, you'll come up to Beach Avenue, you'll have a decision, do I go and turn right? Do I need to go straight ahead? Or to get back to like, say, the people, normally you come down on Burleson and you want to head to the Lexington or something like that, what you would do is you would go up to Beach Avenue, take the U-turn back, okay? It'll be a free U-turn back, no stop or whatever, return back down to Burleson and then back underneath the, the highway and head on to like you would go to the Lexington.
Okay, so that makes sense to me because you're gonna have three lanes on the access road. And just to clarify, because there's been a lot of talk, there is not going to be a light.
There's not gonna be, there's not gonna be a light at the U-turn, but there's a light at.
No, there's no light, there's no future lights.
Okay.
No lights.
So, Beach, Beach Avenue will have a stop sign, but the frontage road will be a free.
Okay. And then when you did your traffic study, was it at a high peak time, like during the tourism, during the summertime? When did y'all do that traffic study?
We didn't do a traffic.
Y'all didn't do it, Text Dot didn't do one?
Via the information documents that we get when all the bidders were bidding the job is how we.
Okay, so someone else did it. Do you know anything about it as far as nothing?
Way before my time, but I don't.
The traffic study was prepared as part of the schematic process for this bridge, that was all done early before we ever became involved in this, it was done twenty-twelve to twenty-fourteen.
Okay, because that would be very important, right?
But you have a copy of it.
We do have a copy. However, since the schematic was prepared with all the lane configurations and everything, we did not alter that, so we didn't have, did not need to do another traffic study for this.
Okay. I think I'm good, Judge.
Are there any other questions? I just wanted to make a few comments. One is how much I appreciate you all being here. I'm very cognizant that you have been on the tour, as I say, the tour around political jurisdictions, you might say, you know, I've already done this once, but I don't think you can ever stop educating and teaching and giving, um, information, you know, you're right, it's just affecting, uh, your everyday, you know, movement around our community and that's good because you, you can see the work that's being done. So I'm really excited that, that you've come today to, to share information and of course, um, as a great mentor of mine once said, uh, you can read a lot into what they say and you can read a lot into what they don't say, right? And, uh, and I appreciate just not only from, um, a legal perspective, but from the sensitivity of information perspective, what you can't say, but I will say that this court is, uh, highly capable and in fact trusted with much confidential and sensitive information. This is part of not only our work, but our mandate as public officers. And so that I would encourage you to continue and open dialogue with us as much as you can to, as you continue to see information dynamic and changing, that you would be proactive and, and contact us. It's always better to, to reach out and touch someone than to have it be read in the paper and for us to reach out and touch you. And I want to make notice that Text Dot's in the room today and so I want to thank, uh, Ricky for being here and, and appreciate the partnership that we have, uh, with Text Dot, not just on this project, but throughout, um, throughout Nuaces County. We, we are a team and, and finally, I want to say that I'm very appreciative to Linda Fig, uh, and from Fig Designs for traveling here because, uh, I know that it had to require travel and I think it's very important that the community understand what a prolific design bridge builder Fig Designs is in our country and quite frankly, people need to learn more about Dragados and find out what a prolific worldwide project design, uh, I mean, construction group they are, tunnels, highways, bridges, it's a, it's an impressive, um, array of, um, of portfolio. I myself have been to Madrid, I have been to Dragados's office and visited with them prior to the beginning of this project, so, um, I think that we need to, you know, continue to be informed. Commissioner Vaughn said it best, uh, our, one of our primary focuses is hearing the constituency on North Beach and I love that there's so many public opportunities to, to have dialogue and you can understand that as brilliant as I think you've probably, you know, put this amazing, uh, route together for traffic, they do not believe that it's in their best interest and you need to hear them over and over and over again. And the reason is engineers by their very nature are problem solvers and if you can change something, it is incumbent, if it has the interest of public safety, to continue to be dynamic and change that. Therefore, I would highly encourage that we not sit back and say, well, somebody did it beforehand, but that we get back out while we're on this infamous pause and really look to see if we're doing what's in the best interest of not just the residents of North Beach, but what's in the interest of our economic development. We have our two largest tourist attractions there, the Lexington and the aquarium and I believe there was a traffic study done by Text Dot in twenty sixteen, in fact, it was done on July fourth weekend and I'd like to get a copy of that because it's gonna really help us diffuse our argument. I'm not a believer in advocacy without information, the data drives the policy, you will hear me say it a million times. So, if it's important to you and I know that it is based on your project communications piece, let's get that copy of that study, it should be of interest to you and let's see how we can really help the folks at North Beach because they're not just the residents, it's us. We want to make sure that there's not a backlog, um, we don't want to come back later in time when we could have done something about it in the future. I certainly understand the geometry, but there are some opportunities there for, I think for discussion, so if you're willing, we're willing to be mediators and facilitators, um, because that's our job and, and we certainly, um, presented, uh, a small kind of county town hall to them not too long ago, but the only questions that came back were about North Beach traffic, about the, uh, really just, they feel short-sightedness in getting to the aquarium and getting to the Lexington and the backlog of traffic that it will incur. And so I say this great project must, must care about the greatest piece of it, which is the iconic main spans, but it also needs to care about the smallest piece of it, which is people's right of, you know, access and ingress and egress. So if Text Dot will hear me and, and try to help me on that study, it'll help us help these citizens. If there's anything proprietary, I'm sworn officer of the court and I, I can handle sensitive information and in a way that will protect the information, but I'm gonna give you a little secret, if Text Dot commissioned it, it doesn't belong to Text Dot, it belongs to the people of Texas, the taxpayers fund every single document that you produce and I produce. And so it's just the way it is, we may not like it, but I can go, as they say, through the Freedom of Information Act or we can just ask each other nicely, but these folks are really needing our help and so I'm gonna ask for your help, I don't know what else to do, but apparently there was a study done, I'd love to see it, if you can help me, Ricky, pass that information, Dragados, that would be fantastic and then we'll gather again. So.
That's the only thing that really bothered me throughout the whole.
Yes, sir.
Is a study that nobody has seen, at the end of the day, when you finish, it's gonna come back to you, I mean, because you're the one that built it. I know somebody did the study, but you could, you can't say, well, we haven't seen the study, we never saw the study. I think you should see the study, you know, and I think Text Dot should be with you on that view of the study, you know, and I, and my, and I have a problem with all these off-ramps, you know, well, everywhere you go, it's a problem with the off-ramps. And I don't know who approves all those, those ramps, you know, and, and you know, everything's, people have accidents and they know that, it's horrible, you know, I think that off-ramps or up-ramps should be made more safe for the people, you know, especially the people of this community, because I mean, on the afternoons, you can go and just drive down SPID and I guarantee you, you'd probably be cussing yourself, why, why did I come at this time of the hour? You know, because it's, it's horrible, you know, and, and we got, to me, two eighty-one going south when it splits to SPID, there's arrows going one way and you gotta go the other way. So I don't know about Text Dot, might, might want to look at that, but, you know, I just think those ramps are very, very important and they cause a lot of accidents. And you want to be safe for the people, this is where safety starts and those ramps going on and going off, so, that's all I got.
I also want to remind the public that, uh, the county along with other partners regionally, we put in twelve million dollars and so I think it's really incumbent upon us to ask good questions and to try to continue the dialogue, but, um, this is gonna be just the project of our lifetime, right? It's not only transformational for vessels, but it's transformational for public safety. Remember, our old bridge has no shoulder, right? Our old bridge doesn't have the safety features that you would want to have that this bridge will afford us. Our old bridge doesn't really have a proper bike trail, if you will, or a walking trail, this bridge will have that. So besides the phenomenal beauty and finesse and elegance of the design, uh, and of course the exciting piece of it that will be the largest, uh, suspend, cable suspension bridge in North America, it does the basic things for us, the things that we really need, which is widening that bridge, those lanes and providing the, the, the walking and/or biking trails. Um, so we want to be your partner, we want to, we want to promote this, but there's definitely things that we can do together to influence, if you will, uh, how we, how we see this affecting some of, some of the smaller communities that are there and if you have any, want to do follow-up, don't hesitate to call our office and I'm sure you know, um, Carrie Myers from the Homeowners Association and, uh, and of course, that's where we're getting a lot of our information from and I'm sure that's not a surprise to you.
Judge, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I'm gonna kind of put you on the spot and, because we've had this conversation, but because there has been so much talk about the exit, I'm just gonna just ask you, you know, is there a possibility there'll be another exit or no? Are you even considering it or is that out of the ballpark?
Well, that would be a, that'd be a Text Dot question.
As he's here, isn't he?
But for, you know, like you said, the geometry, right, we, we've had our, our, what we're going off of, like what Darryl said is, is there's nothing changed on North Beach from the original configuration that was kind of handed to all the bidders as to what needed to be done there. So, so it wasn't, it wasn't the, the Flatiron Dragados and their diet, design team that designed the.
Okay.
Location of those ramps, that was information that was provided at bid time to the bidders. So the only thing that's changed, maybe configuration-wise, is the whole south interchange and what's going on down there.
Okay, so that decision, if we were to do that, would be up to Dex, Text Dot, totally. Can, can you, uh, answer anything to that? Can you comment?
I have a lot of bridge design, but I can carry that message back.
Okay, well, that, that's good enough and maybe we could have a conversation with, to see if that could be, could be feasible.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you.
The only thing I wanted to say is that kind of, I don't know if this is a correction of the, of the record, but it's certainly a reflection of what's happening today. Five years ago, when we probably began these designs, nobody saw the vision or the dream that is now North Beach with a navigable canal. And so I personally believe that there is a real need and necessity to do a new traffic study because of the ordinance that was passed in December, I think, close to 18th by the city. And to investigate, in fact, there's a current RFQ out for a navigable canal. And this really is a game changer for the design and traffic of North Beach. And if we could work together with this new design and thinking, it may change things. And if that requires a new traffic study, then I think that the stakeholders, city and county, should play a role in that. And I don't expect that, you know, maybe Tech dot would say, I want to pay for another traffic study or commission one. But I think we can work together as stakeholders and say, gosh, something has changed. It's something transformational, like a major canal. And that might, you know, require us to, to do a relook. And the reason I'm so interested in that 2016 study is as an engineer, I need my baseline. I cannot commission something without understanding what that baseline is. And so that's why I'm, I'm, I'm wanting that very public document. And, and I think that's where we're coming from, from a North Beach angle. And then as to all the other issues, I think that today is the beginning. And let's, I'm going to be probably more aggressive than most political leaders because I am incredibly concerned about the effect of economic development, the effect of, the effect of delay. Time costs money. And we have a backstop through the MPO. And I'm really concerned about the economic effect on our county. And I think that's my duty as a CEO to be worried about that. So I realize not everything is in your hands, sir. But, but it would be important to me that you would carry that message back and that we have an opportunity to meet many times again to discuss. As you, you know, you have certain protocols that you're working on, right? To, to get a, a new design team in place for the mainspans or to work in conjunction with the current design team, whatever that case may be. And we need to know that. And that might seem sensitive to you, but that information is not private. I believe that information belongs to the public. And so if you see me really get aggressive and press on that, please understand that that's my role and duty to make sure that there's nothing that you have that's private. You know how I know? Because this county wrote a check for $12 million. It became public the minute we accepted dollars. And the city did the same thing and the port did the same thing. And so that's where we're coming from. And I think this has been a good opportunity for me to tell publicly what my, what's going on up here. So.
Well, yeah. And to go along with that too, just so you know, so we're going through the process now of, of looking for people and making a selection or whatever, what, how it'll work out is that, that we'll make our recommendation and then Tech dot will be the ultimate approver of as, as to who's going to be the, the designer for the mainspan.
Is that by contract, sir?
Yes. Yeah. So we, we will, we will make our recommendation and Tech dot will make the, be the one who approves of, of the.
That's highly unusual, isn't it, that, that a state agency would tell a contractor who their subcontractors are?
Well, no, they'll be based on our recommendation though. So I mean, we'll make a recommendation and then they'll be the ones who approve of it. That's.
That's how you did it the first time?
No, the first time it was, is, is there was a, teams were put together. So there was what, four or five teams that bid on this thing? And, and part of their selection process was who they were teaming up with and, and obviously the dollars and schedule or whatever to complete the job.
Okay. That's curious to me legally, but probably not your repertoire. And so I'll leave you alone about that, but I'll pick on Tech dot to explain that to me legally. I don't understand that at all. That's typically not the process. And, and again, my job is to inquire as to what the process is and to make sure that, that I can convey that when I'm asked in front of a camera, which I'm sure I will be. So I appreciate them. Any other further questions? This was information only, no action needed. Yes, sir?
Go ahead and address Commissioner Gonzalez's concerns about, you know, ramps and stuff like that, just so to ease your mind. It's like, so all the new ramps, of course, are done with the newest current standards as far as how much weave distance you have. You know, when you come onto those ramps where you have to come on and then you have to kind of change places with somebody as they're coming off the ramp or whatever. So everything's being done to the newest standards. They'll have the, whatever it is, like a thousand foot weave distance or whatever. So there won't be any of those short ramps and.
Never seen any ramp that's got a yield sign on there.
Yeah. So it'll be.
Like, I don't know who's supposed to yield on them.
So all that stuff, especially in that south area, there, all that's going to change or whatever.
I, I'd like to take time to, to thank Ms. Fig for being here. I mean, that, that says a lot to have you here in our community. And with the, you know, with questions that we have and, and like, I think it was Lynn or who's that said, let's put this community at ease. And I think that's the importance of presentations like this is to put, because we get a lot of questions, obviously, right? We, we need to be fully updated and we do appreciate the information you've given us today. But to have the Fig family onsite, present here in Corpus Christi does say the importance, not only of your reputation as a company and the work that you've done, but your commitment to our community as well to ensure that, that there is safety and that there, that, that the questions are being answered. Along with that, I do want to echo what my colleagues have said that, you know, some great opportunity on North Beach that I, I, my experience has been, you know, in the past was we built new schools and then immediately you need a portable to be added on the campus. Let's not make this like that, right? We got to make sure that if, to match the growth and development that we expect and that we're planning for, that we do have the proper flow to get people in and off of North Beach, which I think will be a boom in the upcoming years and decades to come. And Lynn, I appreciate all the schools you're going to. I don't know if you have or Lorette did prior to you, but if you can maybe get with Ms. Lugo because she's a great assistant to you there. She did great work with CCISD. If you can see if any of the pre-cast yard visits have been done for Robstown or any of the other Jason, especially Robstown because it's in their backyard and they're early college campus now. They have that designation. And so a lot of those kids may be looking at engineering, you know, majors as they go to college. And so if we can include them on a future tour before the end of the school year.
I typically let them reach out to me just because of the scheduling. And I start with the principals, Dr. Wilson, what have you, and then work my way down to the faculty. But I will be glad to reach out to.
And I know you love that because that's your, those are your roots right there. So that's where her family's from.
All around the area. Thank you. And I hope that we can assure this community that what's going on with this bridge and everything so far, it's about safety for the community and safety down the road. And we appreciate your patience. Thank you.
Thanks. And thanks for advocating for the kids so they can learn math in this process. And I want to tell you that every time I come up with a harebrained idea, Lynn always is good enough to listen and say, you know, I really like that. I'm going to advocate for that. But sometimes, you know, because of constraints, we don't get those things done. So I'm going to reiterate that we need to have a full-scale Lego model for these children, not in Tech dot offices, because no one's going to Tech dot offices. We need, of course, they don't have Legos, but the point is, is that the model is being, is, is hiding away, not in the public view. You can teach so much math, so much inspiration for children. Let's get it out. And, and, and I know that Lynn has tried to echo my sentiment. And so this is, this is the advantage. This is what we call leverage. I'm the judge and I've got the mic. And so I get to say, please do this. You can't imagine every school I go to, the only thing the children want to talk to me about is the bridge. So take that for, for what it's worth and pass that up the chain all the way to Madrid because we need to do it. It's such a small, small price to pay to inspire a next generation of, of engineers. So anyway, thanks, guys. Appreciate you so much. Thank you all. Back to business on item number two. We're going to have a series of presentations that are next. And is there anybody that I'm looking at, see, there's a time constraint for anybody? I think we're doing good. Okay. So let's do Halo Flight. Jane?
I don't see Jane Haas. We're checking on that. Could you pass that item right now?
I see Drew Coats and we're going to talk airport. And Drew, come on up. And this is consultation only. I'm sorry, consultation only, presentation only. And we had a lot of questions about how we're going to make our Noises County Airport great again, so to speak. And let's see what you can do for us. Tell us about the scope of your work, sir.
Good, good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Thank you very much, Judge Canales and Commissioners, for the opportunity to come and visit with you this morning. And, and thank you for the opportunity for allowing us to work with the county to maximize the value of this great resource that you have in the Noises County Airport for the county, for economic development, for community development. And so I wanted to spend just a few minutes talking about exactly what we believe we can do in working with the county, what, what we intend to do, what's part of what we have in mind, what also frankly is not part of what we have in mind. So looking at Noises County Airport, airports generally are tremendous economic development engines. They are resources for communities. They're resources for counties. We want to assist the county in making sure that Noises County Airport is utilized is to the greatest extent possible as an economic development resource, doing that in the most efficient, fastest, economically sensible way for the county. Let's talk first about why communities, including such as Noises County, would want to develop an airport. Tech dot has a longstanding, very sophisticated aviation division. They study the effect of aviation, of private aviation on the economy of Texas. Have done that for many decades. They're directly involved with the administration, maintenance and development of airports throughout the state. Based on what Tech dot's study of aviation economic impact is, we know that Texas's network of publicly accessible general aviation airports is vital to the economy of the state and they've, and vital to the communities in which those airports exist. We know that business and flight support activities at Texas airports generate billions of dollars in economic activity, create jobs and improve business operating efficiencies that help Texas to recruit and retain some of the nation's best companies. Tech dot regularly does an economic impact study of all the airports in Texas. The most recent one was done in 2018. And that study, for instance, looks at the impact and relationship of airports in Texas with the statewide economy. That study that found that as of 2018, general aviation airports are responsible for over 48,000 jobs, $2.5 billion in payroll and $9.3 billion in economic output. So given that, how does an airport benefit Noises County? Airports are proven drivers of economic impact and tax base growth. For instance, the McKinney EDC north of Dallas determined that the average business jet relocation, so the owner of a business jet moving an, an one airplane to the airport in McKinney had the equivalent local property tax yield as a seven-story Class A office building. Generally, airports are very clean, low-impact generators of tax base. They use very little in the way of water and wastewater. They don't require school district services like a residential development would. And have very little impact on roads outside the airport. Business aircraft only provide tax revenue to the county and use very little infrastructure. I'm speaking, aviation people are bad about lapsing into jargon and I apologize for that. One of the terms that I've been using and that I, I use frequently in, in what we do is the term general aviation. What is general aviation? Well, general aviation is all of aviation except for the airlines and the military. So that includes a wide array of things such as business aviation, which is non-aviation businesses using airplanes as tools to facilitate the, whatever business they are in. Charter aviation, flight training, law enforcement aviation, air ambulance, agricultural aviation, recreational aviation, and the list goes on and on, but it's wide and varied. Who uses general aviation airports? I, I know there's a, there is a public perception that business aviation is primarily the domain of very large companies, Fortune 500, Fortune 100 type companies. That's actually not the case. Small companies operate most business aircraft in the United States. Business aviation serves 10 times the number of airports in the U.S. than commercial airlines. So while there are approximately 500 airports in the U.S. served by the commercial airlines, there are over 5,000 publicly accessible airports in the United States. So in other words, the general aviation airport is like an on-ramp to the highway in the sky that is the national airspace system. So for companies that are doing business around the state of Texas, around the United States and internationally, the local airport is the way that those companies participate. And the local airport is the way that companies from elsewhere are able to efficiently do business in the communities that have general aviation airports. Business aircraft users tend to dominate many of the best of the best lists for the most innovatives, most innovative, most admired, best brands, best places to work, as well as some of the most financially successful businesses in the country. So what is the current status of the Noises County Airport as an asset for this county? There are a lot of tremendous things that already are, are in existence that make the airport a great asset worthy of improvement and worthy of leveraging for economic and community development in the county. Currently, the airport has a 3,700-foot asphalt runway. The airport has a brand-new terminal, which I'm sure all of you are familiar with. There is over 12,000 square yards of aircraft, aircraft ramp space for aircraft parking and movement. There are outside tie-down positions. There are aircraft hangars. The airport has three different instrument approaches facilitating landing in, at the airport in reduced visibility weather conditions. There's also medium intensity runway lighting system, an automated weather observation system. The airport currently has approximately 25-based aircraft and existing tenants, tenant businesses as well as stakeholders. One of the, the great assets that the county has in the airport is that there is ample land that the county owns for airport development. That's frequently not the case in general aviation airports, and that's a tremendous asset and something that suggests that this airport is worthy of continued development. Another great asset that the county has in the airport is its manager. John Cox is, is doing a great job of working with what is on the ground now and working with businesses and stakeholders to consider what is needed to continue to grow the airport. Based on Tech dot's economic impact study done in 2018, the current economic impact of the Noises County Airport is $1.4 million. That includes what Tech dot refers to as $392,000 of, of on-airport impacts, $234,000 of capital improvement impacts and $120,000 of visitor impacts, coupled with $646,000 in multiplier impacts. So the question then, thinking about, is this resource being used to its fullest extent to assist the county in community and economic development? We can look at some of the other surrounding airports as well as airports in other parts of the state that provide points of comparisons in a variety of ways. Aransas County Airport has $15.4 million of total output. McCamble Field on the other side of the bay at Ingleside has $17.9 million in output. Victoria Regional, $42.3 million in output. Victoria Regional, $42.3 million in output. And Conroe Regional, for instance, has $136 million of economic output compared to the $1.4 million currently at the Oasis County Airport.
That's really bad. I mean, I hadn't really thought about it in comparing it on economic output. I mean, I understand Conroe's connection to Houston, but the other ones are where we should at least aspire to be, right?
And, and the thing that's interesting about Conroe is that it's really, from a road standpoint, nobody's going to fly into Conroe to drive to downtown Houston.
Well, that's right.
There are lots of closer, but, but it's good if you're going to do business in Conroe or the Woodlands or Spring. It's a good airport for that. So, you know, that's, each of those, Conroe, the Woodlands, Spring are about 100,000 people. So that gives you a point of comparison of, of looking at what's going on, even though that's generally in the Houston area. There are some analogies you can draw to, to what could happen and what a, an efficiently-used and grown airport can do for a, a growing, thriving area.
And later, Drew, would you do a comparison of those airports that you just showed us on economic impact and compare runways on length to see if that's a factor?
That's a factor.
I'm guessing it is.
I'll tell you right now.
Okay.
Absolutely a factor. So I think everybody here knows that, you know, if, if, if you ask anybody that flies into or out of the Oasis County Airport, and I am one of those people, I'm, I enjoy flying into and out of the Oasis County Airport, that if I could pick one thing that I would tell you that you need there, it's longer runway. And so the question then becomes, how long? How do you get that as soon as possible? And how do you have as much leveraging of available federal grant funds and other innovative funding mechanisms so that that can be done in a way that is quick and in a way that does not impact the county financially any more than absolutely necessary?
So I'm going to interrupt one more time. So theoretically, Drew, if we raved our magic wand and we could get a 7,000-foot runway in, let's say, next year, would there be a direct correlation for, you think, even our sized airport to attract business where we could be competitive with McCambell and the other ones that you saw?
Yes.
Okay.
That's not the only thing, but, but that-
But it's the big thing.
That would be the, at the top of the list.
Okay.
And so part of what I want to talk about is kind of breaking down kind of what that process would look like for the county to, you know, really leverage and maximize the utility of the airport as an economic development asset, is a community development asset, something that the, the folks from Oasis County Development Commission, Corpus Christi Regional EDC, Robstown Area EDC can, can really tout as an attractive advantage to business relocations and business growth in the area. And I've broken those down into four different categories. One is infrastructure planning and improvements. One is public, private, donor partners. One is strategic, strategic planning, and one is advocacy.
So your scope of work then, Drew, is to help us, oh, well, here we go. Okay, so you're gonna, you're gonna give us a plan that we can act on?
Exactly.
Okay. And you're going to work with our commissioners and those, really all of the commissioners, I would think, have interests, but particularly Commissioner Vaughn, Commissioner Modas, Commissioner Gonzalez, whose territories really merge there.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
So if we look first at infrastructure needs, A number one is runway. 5,000 feet would be much better than 3,700 feet now. 6,000 would be great. 7,000 would be terrific, but you can do a lot with, with a runway, you know, 6,000 to 7,000 feet. You become an attractive, interesting destination for a lot bigger portion of business aviation. And it becomes more interesting for development on, on the airport. The airport, and again, I know the, the Commissioners Court knows this very well and has been looking at this, but the airport needs a better access road. So having direct access from I-69E would be, would be a, a key part of really accelerating development and growth at the airport. I know that there's an existing grant project in progress, that's been in progress for some time, to improve fuel farm and fuel availability at the airport. Would love to see that accelerated, but one thing the airport needs is jet fuel available. Currently, there's, as far as what somebody flying in can put in their airplane, they can put aviation gasoline for piston-powered airplanes, but there's not jet fuel available for transient aircraft. The airport, even with the 3,700-foot runway, even with no public jet fuel available yet, is, is, there's a waiting list for people who would like to base there. The airport needs more hangars then, and it needs the ability to tell somebody who wants to relocate an airplane, "We have a place for you. We can accommodate you." Going a little further down in order, but comparing to some of those other airports that we'd love to see, Oasis County Airport grow towards, having a parallel taxiway to allow aircraft to, once they've landed, to exit the runway, to make way for other aircraft and taxi, not have to taxi on the runway to get to the, the terminal would be great. As the airport begins to grow, having the availability of full-service fueling is something that is a common amenity at these types of general aviation airports and will be, it may not be a need today, but it will be a need once growth is in process. And then improved ground transportation options. So when people fly in, how do they get from the airport to downtown to industrial, you know, get to the port, get to other industrial locations that they're flying into?
And I think Commissioner Gonzalez wants to chime in on something.
Yeah, sure. Just, I mean, Shaheeran is great. I mean, this is all we've been talking about too. And this is last week. We have a team of civil engineers, I guess you might call them, the, from the military.
Right.
And they'll be here in March for the medical and there was a meeting, we have a meeting. But this is last week, I got the information that they really want to come down and help us with the runway. You know, and I think they want, hopefully we'll expand the runway to 5,000, maybe 7,000. As of now, but the only thing that we have to do is provide the material to do the construction, which is, which is a good thing. That's probably most of your expense goes into construction. But also, I've asked, last week I asked Edward and Juan to see if we could sit down and talk about it, to see what kind of plan we would, we talked, you know, in the road, we talked about the road too and everything else, you know, the new access road, but also the, from the runway, you know, at the taxi and all that. So it seems like you have a plan here, I guess, on, on this one here, that's something we could sit down and talk about. But I think by, by end of March, I should know for sure that either the one gets started this year or the 2021. So I think I'm, I'm, I'm looking at 2021 to have something really done, you know, that, you know, you know, once, once we know, then the judge will be-
You can maybe even introduce them so that they could at least understand the background or-
That, that would be great, and I think that's, that's a terrific idea. That is exactly the type of, I think, innovative approach to accelerating development of the airport to the county.
And they build, that's what they do, the Air Force.
Right.
In fact, there's two, two units now they want to get involved with. It was only one at first, now it's two. So they want to get involved with the construction of the runway, which is, which is good for us, because I mean, once one starts, the other one picks up and everything else, so it'll be a whole month and a half, whatever. So that's, that's in the plans right now, so I think it's, it will be beneficial for, maybe we all get together and see what, what we got and what kind of plans there are. And maybe when they come down, maybe we can sit down and talk about it also.
That would be great.
And, and go from there. And I agree with you, that we need more hangars, but I think we need to charge more for the hangars too, so it's always been something that I always say, maybe we give them away, you know, so I think in the long run, we probably need to be competitive with the hangars and always be under so we can get more customers, but I think that we weigh, to be, way, way under is too under, you know, so I think we need to look at what, what the rental would be for the, for the hangars too, you know. If you're going to have the fuel and everything else, which is great to have, so I think in the long run, I think we probably, we're looking in the right direction. So I just want to, not even saying nothing yet till I know, till I kind of have, I don't want to announce something and not say that didn't happen, but, but looking right now that it is very positive, so. So I guess we can talk about it a little bit more.
That's terrific. That's, that's, that's good news. And I think that's exactly the type of innovative approach to accelerating, not only committing to improve the airport, but accelerating that process that, that I would, I would look to assist the county with as we work with you. And so that's a great segue into the next slide, which is, is paying for the Oasis County Airport improvements. I feel certain that the Commissioners Court is familiar with the process, but the FAA Airport Improvement Project Funding Mechanism is a nationwide system through which the FAA taxes both airline tickets and sales of, of general aviation fuel to pay for airport infrastructure improvements. So once those monies are collected, they are dedicated to infrastructure improvement projects nationwide. In Texas, FAA Airport Improvement Project Grants are administered through Tech Dot Aviation. And so, for instance, there have, there, both the terminal and the fuel farm are examples of Tech Dot Grant, AIP Grant-type projects. We would love to see more of that. To the extent that the county needs to spend money at the airport, we'd like as much of that money to be FAA AIP money as possible. That's what that money has been collected for, and frankly, if it doesn't get spent here, it will get spent at some other community's airport. But there are news stories, you know, virtually every week, there was one earlier this week of a $1.8 million grant awarded to an airport in rural Kansas. And if we can spend a $1.8 million in rural Kansas, AIP can, can be putting money into improving that airport right here in Oasis County.
And we've never received those grants here, is that correct?
My understanding, and frankly, well, my understanding is that both the terminal, that the new terminal that's open, as well as some of the ramp work and the fuel farm that's, is, is in process still, have come, are examples of that, and there are different-
Okay, so that's the ramp, the famous, the ramp grant.
Right. So there are different flavors and different types of those grants, but essentially in Texas, the way those FAA grants go is the FAA gives a big block grant of money to Tech Dot Aviation, and Tech Dot Aviation-
Then trickles.
-purses it out.
Got it.
Right.
Okay.
Exactly. And then the, another example of infrastructure improvement funding would be exactly what Commissioner Gonzalez refers to, which is the DOD's Innovative Readiness Training, which can provide the, the technical logistics and labor to actually build these types of improvements, is a form of training military personnel who then would need to be able to do those for either military bases or in other parts of the world.
And Drew, just put this in the back of your mind, but I was at the, the military, well, the ADA, the, you know, defense, was it the ADA Summit, John, we were at in San Antonio just a couple of weeks ago? And basically, the, the talk was, is one, an opportunity to expand mission here is we need to not just think about what aircraft we have today, but what aircraft will be, these soldiers will be training on tomorrow. And so if we can make a case that the 7,000-foot runway is, is better than the 5,000 for IRT, the reason is, is we're going to be able to use that as a potential runway to train future aviators. As we see development growing on the south side, you know, those cabinets and Waldron Fields are just, those are tough for us in, in, as we develop. And so this is a wonderful, even though it's meant for business, okay, I still think there's an opportunity to make mission a part of, of your scope of work here. And, and I want you to think about that, and I'm sorry I don't remember, but I almost want to say it's the T-6, John, I don't know if you remember.
Yeah, it was.
I think it was the T-6 that, that is really going to be more of our future aircraft for training. So I want us to bridge and leverage everything we know, right? I mean, I'm on the Military Task Force, we just got a, an amazing economic development consultant now, we've got you, let's put all of, we've got our IRT and the experience of Commissioner Gonzalez. Now let's start putting our clay together and making something beautiful, because everything is telling me, get it as long as you can to maximize. And Juan's not in the room, but I think it's really smart, Commissioner, for you to start going ahead and thinking about, because we don't know what future IRT, but that I-69, that access road, so we haven't specced that out yet, that's not in our, it might be in our radar, but it hasn't been anything that we've really looked at at Public Works other than just to know that it's important. Maybe it's time to actually get a cost estimate on that and make that part of your profile. So that's something Public Works can do for you, and I'm, I'm sure he's listening through the-
IRT said if we can build it, then we can land it, right?
Yeah, that's actually right.
I have to worry about landing at the airport, though.
That's, that's right. And, and what you're saying about the runway, Judge, is exactly right. I, I know, you know, for instance, these other airports that are, that I gave as points of comparison on economic impact, the military lands aircraft on training missions at every one of those airports-
Yeah.
On, on a, virtually a daily basis.
Yeah.
At 3,700 feet, the military can't, can't use Oasis County Airport yet unless it's-
Yeah, that's right.
-with a helicopter. But, but that would absolutely dovetail into what's good for economic development is also good for mission readiness.
Absolutely.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? One of my big issues is that direct entrance, because it's, Edward, do you have any idea how long that is from I-69 to that airport? Because you're talking about dollars. When you said that, Judge, I was thinking the same thing.
[inaudible]
Edward, if you don't mind, come to the, it's important to come to the podium.
36 is the loc, the, the closest access to it, and that's where they're redoing the bridge work that's through there. So I'd say if we extended the runway out, it would be probably about a quarter mile to a mile, but if you were going to do the whole loop, it would be three miles going-
Is that direct access to 69?
If it's direct access, it's about a quarter mile.
Because, you know, when you, you fly into those airports, we used to have a King Air, the reason you do it's convenience and to where you're getting around. And some of those airports are nicer than your regular airport, and people that own planes, they like that. And so direct asset, access is so important. And I'm just saying, that's a, how far did you say it was?
About a half to a quarter of a mile.
That's it?
So our mile, so our, on our million to mile, I really think that's, if, if you can coordinate that with Juan and make that a reality, that needs to be in our capital improvement program.
But that would be, again, looking at the plan, shifting the entrance to the south side, because it's-
But that's where, that's where our property is, we need to look at that property.
Right.
Okay, well, Drew, you understand what we're asking and what we need now back from you. We need a specific, this is what your best, this is your best option, so that we can then get our Public Works people engaged. I think you're, you're hearing the will of the court on that.
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay.
And, and, and that's exactly right. I mean, from the standpoint of whether it's a small business, a big business, an entrepreneur, an investor, that somebody that's using aviation, general aviation as a tool, it, that airplane is a time machine. And so they're looking at, at door-to-door, portal-to-portal travel time, how does the airplane improve their ability to do business either in Oasis County or leave Oasis County and do business elsewhere? And the, the shorter you can make that drive time from interstate to getting on the airplane and taking off, the, the better, the, the more of an asset that's going to be. That's, that's exactly right, Commissioner. In addition to governmental grants and DOD labor programs, another thing that we want to assist the county with is exploring public-private development partners, seeking collaboration opportunities with potential public-private development, identifying potential partners to invest in the airport's infrastructure, and to fine-tune the vision for what Oasis County is going to grow into with such development partners in conjunction with existing stakeholders. So thinking about those types of infrastructure improvements, one of the things that we would, we would recommend, that we'd, would be happy to envision working with the county to do is really identifying what the county would like to see that airport be for the county. Why is it important? And, and the types of things that we, we want the airport to be equated with include recognizing the airport as an economic development resource for western Oasis County. attracting businesses which rely on aviation, promoting aviation as a business resource to industry, growing low-impact tax base for the county and for other taxing entities, growing good jobs at the airport and in support of the airport, growing infrastructure, and growing educational opportunity. So, what is the advocacy piece of, of what we envision helping the county with? We're, we're not a marketing firm. We're an aviation law firm. We're a very, have a very specialized niche practice. But part of that practice is helping with the development and growth of, of airports and airport businesses. We enjoy that work. We've, for instance, we're in, at the ground floor, as it were, on the creation and development of both the Houston Executive Airport and the Austin Executive Airport. Great projects that have done great things, once they've got up and running. But we're positioned in such a way that we want to be able to make sure that the county, that economic development groups like Noises County Development Commission, Corpus Christi Regional EDC, and Robstown Area EDC have the information they need for them to be the ones to market the airport to business. We're not marketers, but we can, we do speak aviation. We can make sure that, that vision and that, that strategic plan for growth of the airport is in the hands of the people who, in fact, are marketing development in Noises County. So, with that in mind, we want to make sure that the people who are doing that have the information necessary to explain that both, we want to make sure that both the business community and the aviation industry know that Noises County is investing in its aviation infrastructure. We also want to make sure that while pre-existing federal grants can pay for vast majority of the improvements that we're talking about, that growth at Noises County will attract business and grow job and grow tax base, and that, that will require very little in the way of public services. We, we want to make sure that message, message is available to the county, is the county needs it, so that the public is aware of what's happening at the airport and why that's in the public interest. And so, finally, I would conclude with just a little bit of information about, about who we are. Our firm was founded in 1999. We represent clients from all over the world in airport and airport business development projects, aviation transactions, aviation disputes, and aviation-related regulatory and tax matters. We provide advocacy related to aviation in a variety of public media and governmental forums. We are not just representing clients that are involved in the aviation community. We're an active participant. Our firm uses three aircraft to support our practice. These enable us to travel quickly and efficiently on behalf of our clients. Our firm would be an example of one of those businesses that when we want to do business in Noises County, we use airplanes to reach Noises County. The Noises County Airport is our off-ramp to arrive and do business in Noises County. And so, thank you very much for the opportunity to visit with you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
If there are any questions remaining.
Yeah, thank you so much. This is a long time coming, and it's, it's an awesome, it's a great day. We didn't plan it this way, but it couldn't have been any better. You've heard from the NCDC, you've got John Brier as a contact now, and we need to develop this. We have a lot of money invested out there, but it's not making us a lot. So, it's time to get that rate of return sky-high. It's a beautiful facility. First class all the way. It just needs to be enhanced so that we can attract, we need to be in that job-creating category like those other airports that you showed that were, quite frankly, I mean, coming from a lot smaller urban areas than ours. So, I think that we make a great case, and I want to thank John Cox. I want to thank Sam, who's always here, kind of cheering us on and rooting for us from the Airport Advisory Board, and I hope that you guys, I think, are going to have a chance to really dig down on, at 1:30. So, as they say, grab a quick sandwich and get to work. No, thanks again. And is there, are there any other follow-ups? John has one. Excuse me, Commissioner Modis.
Just like you mentioned, I mean, the NCDC, I mean,
Robstown.
Same thing that I mentioned earlier. I mean, I was having these conversations just earlier this week, and I have over the last three years I've been here, what can be done for the western part of the county? And as soon as you said, industry-based in, you know, aircraft, that's a perfect niche that can fit that part of the county. We have some private landing strips in and, or near and around our airport there. And so, there is the, the agriculture aspect of aircraft there in the, in the county. But to see the, the business class, the, those who are bringing in business to, for business, and obviously ties in with our, our vision, with the judges leading in my precinct on creating a runway, or not runway, a roadway directly to there would be a great addition that we know will complement. And so, all these opportunities, I think of when we talk about grants and, and Texas or DPS or anyone else that we can get on board, that, that would be an excellent addition, perfectly timed with our IRT that we have coming in with the US military. And so, it's perfect storm, as the judge says many times. So, looking forward to it.
Really exciting.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Thank you, thank you. We're going to move on to, we have a, an item that is, it's an adoption of an order, Tyner, regarding Republic Services, Inc. project. I believe this is the waste disposal piece of it. There's no financial obligation to Noises County, as I understand it.
The purpose is for them to be able to issue tax-free bonds, and Lee McCormick is here, I believe.
Okay. Lee, do you need to, would you, do you need to say anything, or shall I?
Move approval.
Okay, I've got a, a motion in a second. The magic words were no obligation by Noises County. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay. And then we have item number five, which is kind of a follow-up to an item, Commissioners, that we tackled maybe over a month ago, where we allocated $250,000 for environmental and permitting. And this is actually getting the RFQ out to prepare for these environmental engineering services. And Michael is going to have to prepare that RFQ, but this gives him the authority to do so.
There's no additional funding?
No. No, sir.
Motion to approve.
A motion in a second. Hold on. And motion a second, and now discussion. Michael, do you mind coming forward? This is a question for you.
To prepare for a grant, so this is you then handing it off to Maria, or how does that work?
Okay, so my understanding on this is this is giving authorization for someone to help assist Maria in helping me to write the RFPs for this particular work. And then I would come back to court with the official request to go out for RFQ.
And forgive me, Michael, I'm going to do a little bit of a correction. It's certainly going to be that, but it's even more. It's really meant to hire an engineering team, Commissioner Modis, who would, would put together the necessary information that then we would use to go out and get the grant. So, I don't want you to just think it, they're going to help write the grant. They're actually an engineering team that does the work, and then with their work, we'll go after that mitigation money.
Then they go to Maria.
Yeah, with their data.
With their data.
Yeah, and then Maria has to write it, but the data gets done. We need that to, to actually get any permit over there anyway. I probably, I probably wrote that not as well as I should have, because it sounds like it's just for granting. I'm sorry about that. It's really, you're going to get real work product.
This is the first step.
That's right.
That leads to that, which leads hopefully to the funding.
Right.
Is this the finding of the method of procurement, or does that come later? Because normally, that's the way I would...
Well...
That's what's going on right now.
Yeah, this is the method of procurement in RF.
Yeah, so I, I might edit the, the language.
But it says request for proposal, and then RFQ. You see the mistake there, right?
Yeah, so it should be, it should be RFP.
That's correct. No, it should be RFQ.
Are you hiring engineers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So, sorry about that.
Request for qualifications, then.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry about that.
My fault.
It's a double. Okay, we'll blame Tyner on that one. Says proposals, and then, and then it's corrected on the RFQ.
Yeah, and so additionally, I'm going to need an order to, to come back. So if you'd allow me to come back on the 11th and clean the item up.
Well, yeah.
The selection committee.
Selection process where you have...
No problem. In fact, maybe use the time to actually draft it. We can be, catch two birds with one stone there on the 11th. In other words, you actually need to draft a scope of work so that that RFQ can, you can, we can actually approve it.
Yeah, so on, on the 11th, what I would bring is the small scope of work that allows me to go draft the long scope of work with...
Well, that's what this was supposed to do. Can I change, can we make this a mo, I mean, that's what this is supposed to do. It's supposed to allow him to go, it's supposed to ask the court to authorize an RFQ for this.
You haven't selected the engineer yet, so you, you, you don't have the actual scope that's going to be used for the grant. So, the order here basically is just going to be the delegation of review and who's going to be on that selection committee. That's what that order is going to be.
Okay.
And I'll help in terms of...
Yeah, I just want to make sure we understand. The grant is separate, right?
Yes.
Because what we're getting is the work product to actually say the permits and the environmental possible...
But since we're going to issue a RFQ,
Yeah.
you haven't selected the engineer to give you that scope.
That's correct. Right, I just want to get him, I just want to get us started. That's really the bottom line, because I'd like to see that RFQ developed. Okay, so do you need action then today? Okay, so then I'll go ahead and ask for that motion in a second. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. We've done six and seven. I believe eight is a table for today.
Motion to table.
And a second, please? And all those in favor signify by saying aye. The table of number eight, aye. And then number nine is the last one on the regular agenda, and that's the Oil Belt Little League. Is that a table? No? It's not. We're going to do it, sorry. Motion, well, hold on. Let's get some background. Go ahead, Edward.
Little League met on Monday. They have assigned the agreement, so you've had three signed copies in your packet.
And I just need, you, you are satisfied and recommend approval? You've worked with Commissioner Vaughn? Commissioner, are you satisfied?
Move approval.
And she's got the motions. I'll take yours as a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Edward.
Thank you, Edward.
Thank you, Edward.
Motion to table B1.
I'll take a second. I think I heard a second, okay? All those in favor of tabling B1 is a, to, and by the way, when we're tabling these, they're all going on for the clerks on the next one, March 11th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. C1 is also a fast one, because I think there are no bids. Is that correct, Tyner, on the purchase for the Alister property?
That's correct. We'll, we'll come back when the market's better.
So I'm going to go ahead and take a...
Motion to table, I guess.
Well, it's not, it's not really a table. I think it's just a motion to rescind.
Right, we'll bring it back when the time is right.
Okay.
What do we do, Laura? Nothing?
All right.
No action, no action.
And that leaves us, lastly, with the auditor, who's got a few change orders. And the first one is number eight, Dale D1.
Yes, Your Honor, the, the, we have a small request for some changes. The first page is a grand administration, it's a little bit of travel for some other items they have to do. The biggest ones on page, bottom of page one and two, where we talk about for our indoor parks. Why we're doing this is because we had a, a discussion with the GLO on how we report information to them for their, their beach cleaning we have, and we need to start reporting some expenses in a different department number. So, we had to move the budget around, so it does look like a lot, but it's not out of the order to, to do those items. The funds are available to, to do these requests, so we submit budget change order number eight for your approval.
So moved.
Okay, motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post some sign. Okay, Dale, the next one.
The next one is a, a, a project change order for our capital improvements. There's only a few small items. Commissioner Gonzalez had a little increase in the cost for the fence at the Bush Street, so we're adding in a little money for that. And we worked with Commissioner Chestney on the Parker Pole adjustments that were needed for, for their area. We've, we've, we've spoken with both. The funds are available to do this request, and we submit this for your approval.
Okay, I'll make a motion, or looking for a motion?
Second.
Hit a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. The next one is the financial report for January 2020.
Yes, Your Honor, we're going to go through the, the balances kind of quickly. It's getting kind of late in the day, so... On page four is where we're doing, we know where we start, showing our, our balances for our, for each of our funds, showing our, our current fund balance for the general fund is at $52 million. That is high, but, but we know our collections for our taxes come in very early in the year, so that's not really out of the ordinary. The item we need to talk to about is on, on page 13, where we start to talk about our health insurance. This last month, we did have a very large expense coming through some of it for, and we're working with our, our consultant to try to, because there may be a possibility of getting some money back from stop-loss. But I know he's going through each of the claims to make sure there's, there's funds available at the time. But there was a, a large, large expenses that we've had, so we're just keep monitoring that. So there is a large amount, but we should see a little bit of recovery later in, in the time.
And when we say a large expense, what we mean is a large claim.
Correct.
Just for the clarification of the court.
Aye, Bill.
And there has been several, I know, our, our consultants working through each of the, each of the claims that they have to make sure what qualifies for stop-loss recovery is, will be, be covered. On page 16, where we talk about our differences between last year to this year, as you see for our, our revenue, on the bottom of page 16, you'll see we've, we've brought in $4.5 million more than last year at the same time period, which is very, very promising, how we're going.
I want to repeat that again. That's so good. Might be the end of the day, but it's the most important.
And that's, that's always a, a good, good start to have. As we just talked about our airport on page 20, where we, we talked about our, our rent that we bring in from our, our hangars, and, and our staff is in agreement with y'all. Sometimes our, our rent for these hangars is not to, to, to market level, and we, we would recommend raising some of the rent, but as you see how the collections for each of them, most of them are pretty current in their, in their balances, so we don't see anything large. We've made $3,682 on the sale of our, our fuel. And once we get aviation fuel for the jet fuels, we'll start seeing more of that. As we go through our budget, the expenses.
On that farm land rent, there's a negative, is that correct? Twenty-three, 164?
That's the difference between what we, we budgeted and what we received. We received $37,000, or we, we budgeted 13, because we always had to try to figure out what our farm land lease is. We always normally get $25,000 to $30,000, and we'll make sure that budget is reflected in that. So, it, it seems like that's less, but we've actually received more than what we budgeted, which is good. It's always good to see a negative on, on revenue. That means we've, we've received more than what we've, we've, we budgeted for. So the ones that are, in there are, are, on page 22, where we start our, our budget to each of the general funds, showing some of our, our balances. Now, we'll go through each of them. That had a small little deficit on some of them. Commissioner Gonzalez, on, on your, your department, you're a little bit over, but that's understandable, because when you start buying some of your lower, larger expenses for your travel, as well as your, your office supplies, you have a, a small budget number there to begin with, so it's not alarming that it's a little bit smaller than where you should be, and we're, you're not very far from where you should be. Because you see the rest of them are very close to being where at the 68 to 65% where we need to, to be. So you're, you're a little over, but it's not, not alarming. On page 24... Excuse me.
Hey, you're in trouble, but you're all right. You're not alarming.
It goes to show you who's working.
I'm just joking. I just think it's a funny spin.
On page 20, 24, you'll see our risk management division, as well as a little bit of items. And we, we work with each of these departments when we get the numbers for there. And the biggest one is other expenses, and some of these other expenses include copyist expenses, other expenses that we have. That's a big category where, where we try to, to resolve some, some numbers.
And on grant state, just, we just did the change order, so that reflects the travel?
Yes.
That's a negative?
Yes.
On this report?
That'd be correct. On page 31, and this is some of my, my staff and I, we're going to be working with a judge as well on our Broadway warehouse, is always on utilities and telephone costs. We always budget a real small amount, because we know that there's not much expense there. And we need to make sure the, the balances are, are close, and it's not far from where it should be, but we'll make sure that, that that's not always an issue.
Are you talking about page 32, 1470?
Page 31.
31. Okay, hold on, let me catch it.
1465.
Oh, I got it at the bottom. Okay, sorry about that.
The next one we saw was on page 38. And this is another issue for legal aid, which is Department 3200, and because we have to pay rent all at once, and it always causes this, this department to go as a negative position, and we, we may, we may have to start recording this, even though we pay it all at once, we may start recording it on a monthly, monthly basis, so it doesn't cause an error. Even though we do pay it in advance. On page 39, our 3250 is our magistrate court. The biggest cost is our salaries is a little bit over, as well as some of our benefits. We need to keep an eye on them. I think we, we, how we fix, fix this is, our, our budget was on, based on a certain number of hours, and because of some of the, the general population, we've, we've increased their hours to, to cover some, get some raises, so that's why they may be on that, this kind of a position. And Judge and I, and we, we work with them pretty regularly. Let's see, where's the next one? That's the last one for the budget, everybody else is, is doing a fine position. If we go to page 63.
63.
We're gonna go compare prior year to this, to this year on our expenses, and we know we had a large amount of cost increase for our, our salaries, but as you can see, we're only $1.4 million more in expense than we are from last year. So, if you compare what we were for revenue to expense, we're $3 million plus, which is good. Now, another item, there was a misprint on this. If you turn to page 72, you should've got a replacement on page 72. For some reason, the beginning balances didn't come forward, so the beginning balances were, were in error, so these, the, what's in the books showing negatives is incorrect. You should've received another, another printout showing your, your total amounts. So, for example, the judge has $84,846. Commissioner Vaughn, you have $169,667. Commissioner Gonzalez, $82,71. Commissioner Modis, $61,226. And Commissioner Chesney, $128,983. For a total RTA funds of $526,000 available for, for spending on, on roadways. Now, something is of importance on page 79, and y'all are doing a great job on spending the 2004. We still got a little more to go, but if you remember, a few months back, this was over $600,000, now we're at $200,000, and we're doing a very good job. And part of the, one of the balances that we work with Commissioner Chesney is spending some of this money, so we're doing very well to getting this money spent, and as well as 2007, where we need to work on. We've got another, other ones that we need to make sure we, we factor into. We do like to use, use the 2019 tax notes pretty regularly on some of our CIP expenses, but we need to see about some of the older expenses from 17 and 16, as well as 15, is those monies can be used to, to cover the costs.
And if you are, if you are wondering, you know, what are my, you know, tasks that I can appropriate, please see us, talk to us, talk to Tyner. We've been in constant contact with, with Blakely Fernandez, who is a great expert in this public finance world. We have used her. I met with her yesterday, and we, there's a real difference between 2015 COs and 2016 COs, and of course, going back to seven and, and four, but four and seven have to be zeroed out within the next 60 days. I'm gonna issue that as a, as a call. Those have to be gone. Seven years is kind of the pushing, we're pushing the envelope, and we're beyond there now.
Well, the, the key issue that, that we'll always say with, and I'm sure Estrada will say this as well, you, you use the, the proceeds you receive from your bond issue to, to cover the cost. I'm pretty sure the money we have left over is, is, is interest.
Could be.
It's not as, 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 as critical as using the funds that were through bond issue, but we still have to use them.
But we have so many identified projects. All, we can help you spend those dollars in the identified projects where it will make the most difference.
Exactly.
So, just come to us, and we will help.
I will help you.
You will help us?
Our, our, our P card on page 83.
Okay.
For the month of January, we spent $361,449, $449, and as we've had in the past, the biggest expenses in our maintenance repair of equipments. I know Michael and I are working with Laura and her staff on the, the lease agreement for our Enterprise fleet, so we're working on, hopefully have that for you very soon, to try to get that started out, because I know there's several, the castles and stuff are needing some, some new vehicles and replacement parts of it. The last portion of it is on page 153, just told you how much we've spent in P car transaction for the entire four months we've had as of the January. We've had 5,000, 5,492 transactions at a cost of $1.69 million, averaging costs of $308 per, per transaction. With that, I, I present the monthly financial report for the month of January 31, 2020. I, I know it was a very, very lengthy report, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer. If not, it submits for, for your acceptance.
I've got a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, okay. Post same sign. Yeah, those are just great numbers and a great report. I was at the Bond Buyers Conference yesterday in Austin, or let's see, I'm already confused. I was there Monday, and I'm gonna just tell you, the eight and a half percent of growth is just, I mean, it's, it's just tremendous, Dale. I don't think we can say enough good things about how we are being efficient, how we're making smart decisions to drive good results. This is not by accident. This is good decision-making and, at every step of the way, and, and we've done it while we really increased our expenses. I don't know about you, but I'm really, really proud of this economics report, and I plan on sharing it with Estrada Inahosa and Noe himself this afternoon, and it's just, I mean, I told him a little bit about it in, in person, but he needs to see it in writing. It's, it's a big deal, and it's gonna create tremendous confidence, and the next time we go to rating agencies, if we keep this up. So, I want us to keep it up.
The last item I want for, for your consideration is, we, from time to time, we do get rebates from our, our, our purchasing boards, and we have a, when we, we go through buy boards, do we get, for this particular month, or this particular time, we receive $9,092 as a rebate for, from our, our purchase. So, so I know when, when Michael works with purchasing the vehicles and other ones, we do use buy boards and there's other methods, and so this is show you how we get rebates for that particular function.
So, do we get rebates from the other cooperatives that we're a part of?
I know the buy board does. Michael, you might wanna, some do and some
Yeah, some, some do, like Tips is a new one, that has just started a rebate program just last year, and we're taking advantage of that. We're actually running the items that we go through Castro Roofing, or going through the Tips contract, and we'll start to see those rebates coming in next year as well.
I say, let's use the buy boards like they tell you. You can use that cash-back credit card to get some money back, then we should be using that card. I'd say the same thing with the different cooperatives. I mean, if there's certain ones
I agree.
That pay us back, then
Do it.
Why would we look at using the others, or tell them, hey, this is what we're getting, y'all better get on the ball, or we may not use you anymore.
Right, and, and in addition to the rebates, we're also looking at the costs. So, although some may offer rebate, you know, like some credit cards offer you cash-back, and, and the rates they're charging, and the interests are so high that you don't want to be a part of it.
That's right.
So, so, we, we'll, we will take advantage of those when it makes sense for us, and always looking for opportunities to bring money back to the county.
Yeah. In fact, that's why this is on your agenda, is because it came across my email, and I flipped it to Dale and said, hey, we gotta tell everybody about this. It's $9,400, but the, the concept is significant, right? Not necessarily the dollars, and between that and the P cards money that we get back as well at the end of the year, plus the rebate on the pharmacy, it all adds up, and it allows us to do good things, so. I'm really excited about that. Okay, anything else for Michael? Okay, super. In that case, I'm, we are going to, I just wanna do a quick back loop. We're gonna actually table the halo flight piece, because she couldn't be here.
We copied that over to March 18th.
Okay, and so I just need a motion for that